Please join me for the pledge to start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic and to the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks everyone. I'm gonna start off with a roll call of board members. Peter? I see Peter. Just doing a roll call, Peter. Confirm that he can hear you? Okay. And Ben, I don't believe is on. Nicole?
Here.
Rocco?
Here.
Bob?
Here.
Joan? And Joan is absent as well, as expected, since we have the a quorum of five tonight. Let me get dispensed. Tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's March 13th, 2020 Executive Order 202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted on the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noted, noticed, and we have fulfilled our legal obligation, legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the town, excuse me, and on the town's bulletin board within the building. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings tonight have been properly published. Thanks, everyone. We're gonna first up just make a note that Vassar, Locust Grove, and Stewart's are to be adjourned tonight to a future date, and we're gonna do a swap for the conflict that Hudson Heritage subdivision will be first, followed by Foman Wash, and I thank the Foman Wash for allowing us to do that. So first up, Hudson Heritage subdivision, sections two and three. And who's here representing that tonight?
Well, Kyle Leger with Chazen Companies. Marty was not able to make it tonight.
Hold on, having a sound problem. Can you get closer to the mic or turn it up? Kyle?
Yep. Is that better now?
Now we can hear you.
Alright, great. Kyle Leger with Chazen, representing EFG Saber tonight. Marty was not able to make it. However, I believe either Christine Marin or Sue Burke with their office will be joining us shortly. I just talked to Christine about 15 minutes ago. We were both on our way home, so she may have hit a little bit of traffic, but she should be logging in soon here in case you have any questions for the developer side. But in general, what we met on last month, at last month's meeting, was the section one plat. That section one plat did show what the section two and three plats would look like, so, you know, we're here tonight with those plats that now that we essentially used that time just to formally put the plans and the maps together and formally submitted that. So that's what you have before you tonight, but it's the same that was contemplated last month.
Yep. Sounds good. We had to last month approve the first part, first section of the plat.
Right, and preliminary for sections two and three, so we're here for the final sections two and three tonight.
Okay, thanks Kyle. Eric, are you on yet?
Yes, I am. So, the staff recommendation we, is to open and close, open the public hearing, and then if, we're also recommending you consider closing the public hearing and adopting a resolution prepared by council and staff, which you have in your packets. If you have any questions about the procedure, it is similar to the previous. I guess I'd refer you to any comments by Council David Cooper, and then from Planner Liz Axelson, and engineer of CPL.
Alright. Thanks. David?
Yep, no major comments here. This is just kind of the back end of what we did last month, and just making sure that sections two and three are now complete and can be filed.
Alright, and Liz?
Yeah, just as brief as Dave, I looked, and sections two and three maps are in great shape, very few comments, and I recommend the board consider approval.
Alright, thanks Liz. Don, are you on for any engineering comments?
I am. We don't, we don't have much. Most of it'll get resolved pretty easy.
Okay, great. Sounds like we've got things buttoned up there. This is on for public hearing, so at this point I move we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. Is there anyone on the call tonight wishes to comment on this application? Remember, you can do star six to unmute, star nine to raise your hand on the phone. Or raise your hand on the chat, and we'll check on the Zoom. Give it a minute. No one on? Alright, seeing no one, I move we close the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. Alright, we can go around the board for some comments. Any comments, Bob?
No, nothing from me.
Rocco?
Nothing here.
Nicole?
Not at this time, no.
And Peter?
I'm good.
Alright, I'm good myself. This is good to move forward. So I think we're ready for a motion.
I move that the planning board adopt the attached Town of Kentucky Planning Board Resolution granting conditional final major subdivision approval for the Hudson Heritage Project.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the resolution, called to question, all is in favor, by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes, five to zero.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Have a good one.
Good to go.
Thank you for moving me first. Thank you, guys. Have a good one.
Take care. Thanks, David. Okay, next up, we've got Foman Wash at 2629 South Road, back for a site plan review and architectural review. Who's here representing Foman Wash tonight?
Good evening, Chairman. It's Jay Deising with Murray Architects.
Hey, Jay.
Happy to be here tonight. Last met with your board at the June 18th meeting, and I'm happy to give you an update of our progress since that time. So I'm just gonna quickly share my screen.
Okay, great.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Alright, so as you are probably aware, we're transforming the former Coyote Grill site shown here to a new Foman Wash. This is our proposed plan that we've discussed with you over the last few months. During those discussions, we've agreed to a appropriate location for interconnection with South Road Crossing, added a pedestrian sidewalk to the dog wash, and adjusted the location of some of the vacuums, and incorporated an anti-collision system to assure that cars don't back up while exiting the car wash, and also made some slight adjustments to minimize our setback variances that were required. At our last appearance, the board referred us to the ZBA, and we attended their June 13th meeting. The ZBA granted all of the area variances needed to implement this site plan as shown here, so we did not need to make any site changes based on our ZBA process. Here we see the architecture and the wall signage that was approved by the ZBA. The planning board, I think, is familiar with the architecture in this slide, as we discussed it in previous presentations here, incorporates a slope roof design that complements some of the building designs in the South Road Crossings project, and the materials and colors are the same, high-quality materials and signature colors used in the other Foman Wash locations that we've worked on. As to the signage you see in this slide, the ZBA granted the variance to approve the wall signage shown, which actually did comply with the permitted square footage of sign area, but that area here is divided up into four separate smaller signs, which help to identify the various services offered at the building. And then as to the freestanding sign, the ZBA did not approve the sign size we requested, but approved a compromised sign size. That was exactly halfway between the permitted size and the size we originally proposed, and that approved signing is shown here and is option two in intermediate in the center of the page.
Okay.
So we've updated all of our plans to reflect the result of our ZBA process. And the only other update that I wanted to share with you tonight is regarding the DOT. They're very close to issuing their permit for our new entrance. We're just in the process of resolving a minor detail regarding a drainage pipe size. DOT has asked that we complete a form to authorize the use of two 12-inch drainage pipes rather than a single 18-inch pipe, so it's a pretty minor detail. We've submitted this paperwork to the DOT and expect to receive that permit very soon. They've actually said that it's okay to proceed with the work, and we would just have to complete that paperwork if necessary prior to the town issuing CO for the project.
Okay.
So that basically concludes, you know, any updates that we have for you tonight. We request the board consider closing our public hearing, which is still open, and issuing a special use permit and site plan approval, subject to any minor conditions that are outstanding, and then also granting architectural approval for the project. So that's about it. I thank you very much.
Thanks for the overview, Jay. And you go to Kristen for the department's recommendation.
Yeah, thanks. Jay, if you wouldn't mind, just stop sharing your screen for a moment.
Yep.
So, yep, thank you for the overview, Jay. That was perfect, great. I think you provided and hit on all of the points I would have asked you to talk about regarding the ZBA appearance. So those are all set. So staff is recommending a conditional approval, so we would recommend opening and closing the public hearing and adopting a resolution to grant conditional special use permit and conditional site plan approval this evening. Yeah, I did see the, the letter or the notice or addendum that was supposed to be sent over to DOT that went out this afternoon around 4:00 PM, so I know that they're actively working to close out that one last item between Mazer, which is the consultant for this project, and working with DOT, so. And I actually had a conversation with the person who was reviewing the DOT elements that are outstanding, and, you know, everything's moving forward as it should.
Sounds good. We go to, let's see, Markon for any final thoughts on traffic?
At this time, I don't have any additional comments, just want to make sure that the applicant keeps us involved in correspondence between them and DOT on the signal timing.
Okay, yep. Try to optimize the U-turn there to get back to this.
Yep.
Okay, great. Anything from remaining items from engineering, stormwater, or wastewater?
We have a few easement issues that we're still gonna work on, but probably the biggest one that we gotta solve right at the moment is a, is to make sure whether or not we need a wastewater monitoring program, which we'll work out with Franco.
Okay, so that can be conditional?
Yes.
Alright, thanks, Don. It is on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Do they hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. Is there anyone on the meeting tonight which is to comment on this application? Remember, if you're on the phone again, star six to unmute or mute, and star nine to raise your hand, or raise your hand in the Zoom chat. Alright, we've had the hearing a few times, so I think everybody said, had their say. So I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. Alright, let's go around the board for final comments on this project. Peter?
Just one question. On the proposed pass-through to South Road Crossings, has the, have you, do you have an easement agreement with the South Road Crossing?
I can speak to that if you want, Jay. Being, we're working on both projects. We, the two owners are talking to each other through the document, and have, we submitted correspondence that South Road Crossing is in favor of putting it together. We just have to put the formal legal easement together, Peter.
Okay, so we'll make that a condition of approval?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Alright, thanks, Peter. Nicole?
No. I have nothing.
Nothing else? Okay. Rocco?
One thing, on the chart that they showed on the site plan, I didn't quite see where the pass-through was gonna be. I don't know if they used a different chart this time.
I'm happy to show you that. Again, I'll just reshare this screen.
Share the screen there a minute.
So the pass-through is right down here to the south?
Oh, okay. I got it. Okay. Yeah, I got my, I got my orientation mixed up. I see it now. Thank you.
No problem.
I'm good.
And I think you said that pass-through aligns up with their, their road in their development, right?
I'm sorry, Chairman, I didn't hear that.
That the pass-through lines up with the interior road in the South Road Crossings development?
Correct. We adjusted it so that it would line up with that interior road, as you mentioned.
Okay, thanks. Alright, anything, Bob, from you?
No, nothing from me.
Okay, and looking at myself, I'd like to thank you for putting in the pedestrian connections and modifying the architecture, et cetera. So I think I'm good. Let's go for a motion.
I move that the planning board grant conditional special use permit approval and conditional site plan review approval for Foman Wash 2629 South Road, subject to the following: Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, inclusive of but not limited to 1 through 4.
And does that, does that include the illegal easement that Peter brought up?
And five, including the easement.
Okay. Okay, Kristen said that's included theirs. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it moved and seconded. Grant conditional, called to question, all is in favor, by roll call.
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes, five to zero. And you have any further comments on the architecture?
I don't. I think we've explained it a few times. Certainly, if there's any questions, but it hasn't changed since our last presentation. Again, we've incorporated the slope roofs per the board's request, and very similar materials to our other Foman washes.
Yep. Anyone on the board have architectural comments?
I think they did a good job bringing the design into compliance with town standards. It looks, it looks a lot better.
Alright, thanks, Peter. I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes, five to zero. You're good to go, and good luck with construction.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Yes, thank you all very much. Thank you.
Alright, take care. Next up, we've Eastdale Village, 10th Site Plan Amendment. Jeff up there, somewhere?
Good evening.
Hollywood Square's there, yeah, Jeff, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to share the screen.
Yep, what has transpired since our last visit?
Yeah, so after, after our last meeting, there were some, some review comments, and we've, we've continued to progress with changes on the site plan, and some changes in the documentation as requested. I think really at the last review, there were some secret comments that we addressed, including some traffic comments that we addressed with the board. We addressed some questions about land bank parking and the difference between land bank parking and future parking areas, and we've designation of these areas, like here behind buildings H-I-N-J as potential future parking. It's not really land banks, potential future, the same as this area. An idea of what, what could be, could be built over there. I know there've been some outstanding questions from our neighbor, Mr. Martin, and we've addressed those, and I'm happy to go over and detail both the questions and our responses that the board would like.
Yeah, I saw you had written responses to all of his questions.
Yes, we provided them before the last meeting. Eric can further transmit it to Mr. Martin, so he has, he has easy access to them. There were some questions at the last meeting about the sewer tenancy and capacity with the, again, with the increase and the number of units, the increase in proposed commercial space. In the wastewater engineering report, which went to the town here. Board, is that?
Eric, Eric, you need to mute yourself.
Yeah, a little bit of background noise there.
The board has asked for increased screening and landscaping along the border here between our project and the, of the Little Sea and Nathan neighbors, so both fencing and screening is on, is on this side, matching fencing and screening on the, on the Darrow Place side.
Great.
And we've, we've, there were some errata, some inconsistencies, and I missed the signature and the EAF and the applications, and so we've corrected those, updated the tables as necessary. So really, we've, we've, not so much in the plans, but in the, and a lot of the work that was presented, we addressed the minor comments and the secret documentation and re-presented this back to you.
Alright. Okay. Thanks, Jeff. You go to Eric for town's recommendation?
Sure. Yep, Jeff's accurately summarized. They've responded to most of the comments of the planning department. There's a couple of technical things to remain, including some coordination of lots. Probably the only thing which came up was as far as an amended seeker findings, which is the next step for the board, is to consider how this proposal conforms with the seeker that was approved back in, I think it was 2018, is to consider all the changes to this date. Most of those issues have been closed up, but we were waiting comment from DOT on traffic, and we did receive some comments just today, just a couple of hours ago, with some additional questions. There was a traffic evaluation, which I'll turn to our traffic consultant in a moment, but there are some comments to be addressed. So staff is actually recommending that the board hold off and incorporate, you know, give, provide a chance to absorb those comments, and for the applicant to respond to them, and the consultant to address them. So the recommendation you have tonight, actually, although we provided one to adopt a resolution to move forward, we're actually recommending that we process those comments and adjourn the public hearing after you open it tonight to the September 17th meeting, to provide time for that purpose. With regard to those comments, I'm gonna ask the traffic consultant to respond, and also the engineer to give, I'm sorry, the traffic consult to respond, and then the engineer to update. Alana, are you on?
Yes, I'm right here. Sorry, I have to put down my microphone here. Good evening. So yes, as Eric said, we did receive some comments from DOT regarding the traffic evaluation around 3 o'clock or so today. The DOT had a couple comments for the town to consider, specifically just noting that the additional traffic does result in, you know, increased delays to the Route 44 corridor, which was definitely acknowledged within the traffic evaluation that was updated. One of the comments from DOT was actually incorrect, in that they were talking about a 15-second increase in delay, as opposed to what's actually a 5-second increase in delay. So it wasn't, I think they were just looking at the wrong information for that. And then the other part that I, that the DOT was talking about was there are some other developments on Degarmo Road that are not actually within the town, that they're going to provide some information about, and whether those may need to be included as background growth for the analysis or not. This is something that we'll definitely be reaching out to the department about, and making sure that we're addressing any and all of their concerns. I do just want to, again, kind of remind the board that the analyses as presented do not take into account the adaptive traffic signal control that has been placed all up and down Route 44 within the study area, and actually beyond the study area. The analysis really isn't able to show the benefits of that adaptive control that will come online and kind of help the corridor as a whole, which is why the applicant previously was required to, to provide that adaptive control at more than just study area intersections. They had to move quite a ways outside of the study area, because it's more beneficial that way to have that adaptive control. But again, the analysis isn't able to show that.
I think you said that once those adaptives are on, it improves it to about 10%? Was that right?
Yeah, the documentation says about 10% on average.
Okay. Thanks, Alana.
Sure.
Let's see. You go to, anything further, Eric? Did you have something further, Eric?
I was just inviting Don to...
Oh, yeah, I was just about to ask that, yep.
Yep. We don't have much. We just need some more notes, and we need a copy of the wastewater engineers' report, all things that can be taken care of pretty easily.
Alright.
And Kyle, there were two minor points from planning review I should mention. One is that in the conditions of approval, number four, the zoning administrators' review, that should probably include, that should include an explicit reference to obtain the variances that are required prior to the chairman's signature. Number four, that's identified, those are identified by the zoning administrator. And then secondly, in the planning department comment, number three, there was invited some discussion of the snow, removal of snow from temporary storage in parking spaces, and there was a, there was a thought to use it for 10 days based on another application, and after some discussion, it was a couple board members and others, perhaps you might want to discuss that with the applicant. We'd suggest perhaps five days might be reasonable, but that would be up for discussion between the board and the applicant, as a period in which to remove snow from parking spaces to be available to the residents after a snowstorm.
Okay, thanks, Eric. This is on for public hearing, so at this time I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. Is there anyone on the meeting tonight which is to comment on this application? If you're on the phone, star six to unmute, or star nine to raise your hand, or raise your hand with the Zoom feature. Take a minute to... We'll take a minute to look for that. No hands raised?
Nope.
All right, there'll be another opportunity. I move we adjourn the public hearing to September 17th, 2020.
Aye.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. All right, let's go around the board for additional comments. Start with Bob.
Just, I wanted to follow up on the discussion about the snow removal, 10 days to five days. Isn't, isn't the plan that you actually, if you have some significant snow, they're going to get rid of it the next day? I mean, I don't understand why, why isn't it no more than five days, you know, if it's really a major storm, but...
If I can respond, I mean, I think that's absolutely the issue. So if it's, you know, it's a small, you know, snowfall, it's done, next day it's out of there. If it's a moderate snowfall, yes, we'll clear out as many spaces as we can, do a little bit of storage, get it out of there in a couple of, three days. The concern that we have is that it's a really big storm and we're trying like crazy to get the snow out of there and can't get it out in three or four or five days. It's not always that easy when you get, if you get a couple of feet. And that's the, because what happens, you get a couple of feet, you're plowing all night long, you're keeping the spaces, as many spaces as you can, clear, which you end up with a big pile to keep, be able to keep, you know, 90-plus percent of the spaces clear. And then once you have a big pile, it's just a little harder to get it out of there in a couple of days. So we will absolutely be diligent, and 10 days seems like a long time, but five days is an awfully short amount of time, again, depending on what day of the week it falls on, what time the snow is, how deep it is, how heavy it is. You know, snow isn't always the same, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Heavy snow is just harder than a foot of light snow. So we would appreciate the flexibility, understanding that it's in our interest to get the snow out of there as quickly as possible. But sometimes on those big storms, which is what this is about, it's hard to do that.
I mean, and...
So this is, this is a private firm that would do the snow clearing for the, for Eastdale?
We both contract and we have on-staff personnel to deal with it. So we have a combination of both people and equipment to handle it.
Okay, well, thanks for your...
There's another...
I mean, I appreciate you stating that your intent is to get rid of it as soon as possible. And I understand you get a major storm, that's going to be problematic. Okay. I don't have anything else.
All right, thanks, Bob. I'd just follow up that, you know, another development agreed to five days, but this is a big, much bigger development. Is there anything less than 10 you would entertain, Jeff? This time? Say eight days or...
No, right, right. So, you know, yes, I mean, it shouldn't be there more than a week. I mean, that's what, again, that shouldn't be more than a couple of days. And that's, so, yes, we'll do our darndest to get it out of there in seven or eight days. That's absolutely, maybe if there's, maybe there's a relief valve in there somewhere that if we have a, you know, there's a special consideration, if we can, you know, talk with Mike and Don and say, hey, look, we've got a real problem here. Can we get some, you know, is possibly to get some relief on our real crazy snowstorm? You know, that would be, that might be helpful as well, just to recognize extenuating the circumstances.
All right. Let me move on to Rocco then.
Nothing new, I think. I mean, I share Bob's concern with the snow, but I think they have a point that, you know, sometimes you get a crazy storm and maybe some type of a relief valve could be built in.
All right, maybe we'll just leave the 10 days if the board's agreeable. The, if we have an 1888 type of snowstorm, all bets are off. All right.
It is, it is 2020. I mean, that's a...
Yeah, you never know. The year's not over yet.
Right.
We go to Nicole for comments.
I don't really have anything. I just, you know, once they have those traffic pods in there, I think the traffic is really going to get a little bit better there. But I can tell you, because I grew up on 44, I can tell you that from what, you know, Eastdale has done already, the way that they've, you know, set up everything, the, you know, the advances that have already happened with some of the traffic lights, it's already improved 44. And I do understand, you know, DOT has some concerns and stuff like that, but I know that it's already improved a little bit. And once those pods are in, I think it's going to get even better. So that's all, that's all I had to say.
Okay, that's great to get some anecdotal input like that. Thanks, Nicole. And Peter?
I just a question for Eric. And that is, I just wanted to be certain about the resident on Darrow, Mr. Martin had sent us a letter. Those concerns he raised, have they been addressed and have you been in contact with Mr. Martin?
I forwarded him, I responded, I forwarded to him Jeff's response. I thought, my own opinion is that the response Jeff provided in June was consistent with the seeker evaluation by the planning board and the updated comment by the, comment on the drainage by the town engineer at the July meeting, which I think adequately addressed those comments. That would be up for the board ultimately to determine if it was consistent with the prior seeker issues. Basically, he asked about wildlife, which was addressed previously. There's been no change to that. The drainage, which the town engineer addressed.
So we responded in full?
Yes, he's been provided with the information. I have not heard back from him. I didn't get it.
All right, terrific.
Yeah, I mean, Jeff had...
The only other comment I would, I would have is that so far, Eastdale has lived up, at least to my every expectation, in some cases has surpassed. It's a very user-friendly environment, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I had my two cents just passing by there today. It's a nice day, there are people out already on the new square there in front of all the four stores that are open and it's starting to become an active community. So you still have, you still have to get...
Carl, can I have one follow-up request?
Sure, Bob.
Yes, for Jeff. You know, I'm assuming that at some point there'll be a number 11 coming forward. I don't expect the street to end, but I find it hard sometimes to understand how we got here. Is it possible to put a kind of a simple, I don't know what it is, a chart, a diagram showing where we were at the first proof plan and how we, where we are now and what's changed? I don't know if that's a major thing to do, or I just think it would be helpful for me at least to understand all of the, where we are and how we got here.
I can certainly take the, take the site layout plans from the, from the original and the, and each of the, each of the successive approvals and walk the board through that. It might take, you know, 15 or 20 minutes, but I can, I can do that at our, at the next time we submit, if that's appropriate. I can, I can put that together, that's, or I can, or I can prepare something and send it to you and you can look at it to your own leisure. I mean, whatever, whatever is...
Yeah, I think, I think that would be better. I don't think it's something you have to do with the board meeting. I'm just trying to understand, you know, the migrations from, from day one to today and tomorrow.
Yeah, I can put together a package with a little bit of narrative on that, sure.
Yeah, it'll be good.
Thanks.
Maybe a little overlay or something, or whoever you want to do it, Jeff, that'd be great. Yeah, I mean, as you...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I was saying, maybe you do it as like an overlay from the first to the last, or however you think most appropriate to visualize it.
Yeah, I'll play around with it some and see what, see what, what I think at least projects it best.
I mean, I think, you know, some of these changes are, as he gets tenants, the tenants, you know, a little bit of modification of the building footprint or size or whatever. So, so that results in some amendments. All right, so you still have to get to the ZBA, Jeff?
Yes, but I can't go there until you are, you have adopted a seeker finding.
Yep.
So we would go there presumably after your, your next meeting, if that's when the findings will be.
Right, right.
Is presented and talked about.
Yeah, we're going to wait on that until we get through the final little hurdles here. All right, at this point, I will make a motion that the planning board determine the application is incomplete and defer action on the application and to direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to following one through, what do we have, 10 here? Tonight, that included the modifications that Eric mentioned earlier, such that the ZBA going to variances. And what was the other one, Eric?
Oh, it was just the, it was the snow.
Oh, the snow, okay. We discussed the snow, so we're good. All right.
Are we good, are we good with 10? Is that where the board landed?
What's that?
Are we good with 10 days? Is that where the board...
Yeah, I think that's the way it worked out. Everybody was satisfied that you were going to move things out as quick as possible.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a large project area. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to defer, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes, five to zero. And we'll see you next month, Jeff.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'll see you later, later on tonight.
Okay, next up, we have 11 Wiltsey Lane, Wiltsey Estates, Lot 55 subdivision. Who's here representing that project tonight?
I am Michelle Zerfus of Berger Engineering.
Okay, great. A quick summary of what's happened since our last meeting?
We, since the last meeting, there were some comments at the last meeting, which we responded to. That's in the 323 letter. The last meeting was in March, just before everything got shut down, so everything was very much delayed until now. So if you would like, I can share my screen and go over a quick overview of what, what the project is.
If you got, yeah, if you got, just overview of the plans, everybody can see it quick, remind.
Okay, so the proposed project is just a simple two-lot residential subdivision of an existing lot from a 2004 plan. There's Lot 1, Lot 2, well, I call them A and B just because it's been called 55 before. Both these lots are on an existing town road with existing water and sewer. Both of these proposed lots do meet the bulk regulations.
Okay, no variances then?
No variances. Let me switch to the other drawing. This house driveway have a building permit and are under construction.
It's not, you didn't change the page.
I changed it. Did you see the page change?
No, we did not. It's still on the...
Not, okay, let me...
I'll stop the share and then you'll have to reshare.
Might stop and restart.
It's not in the same PDF document.
I see. Now, can you get up there now?
Now we have it.
Here, let me try it again.
No, briefly, we had it.
Okay, here it is.
Okay.
Okay, so this driveway and house are under construction right now. They just issued a building permit. So the site distance, he has the highway permit, so the site distances from this lot are adequate, that's, you know, highway department looked at this. The easement here was for the benefit of this driveway. This driveway's been roughed in, there are no obvious issues. There might be some small high points to actually take it off over here, but basically this, right now, there's, from the roughed-in driveway, there's no obvious issues in site distance. Down here will be even better.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And both driveways do meet the town, the town site distance requirement. This was a 2004 subdivision, so the stormwater is under the 2004 regulation, which included almost nothing. So there are no onsite stormwater treatments that you're, you normally would see now. And we checked the adjoining lots, then we checked the existing, and the filed plans, and there's no stormwater to be on any of the lots. The total disturbances for both lots is less than an acre. And then there were some other questions about like blinding turtles. There's a small blinding turtle area on the other side of Route 44, which is 800, 700 feet away, 50 feet lower, and they have to go through the Wiltsey construction before they'd ever get up to the site.
All right.
I believe that, that hit the highlight.
Thanks for the overview. Go to Eric for department of recommendation.
Sure. Staff, there's, we highlighted, well, the staff recommendation for tonight, we've provided you with a resolution to go either way, for either deferral or for approval. Since that time, the engineer clarified some of their notes, and we got some additional information about the driveway proposed site distances. At least one of the driveways, the newer one, both driveways are pretty steep and they come out on a curve. The applicant was, is proposing a site distance easement of, which would require grading over one lot for the benefit of the driveway located on the other lot. They're proposing some grading, and it was difficult to read, interpret the site distance. So the, I had referred previously to an ASHTO standard for sight lines, which was from a previous traffic, a traffic consultant on another project. The engineer has provided some updated comments, which correctly utilize the standards in the town code for driveway site distances, and he's requested some additional information to be shown on the plan for evaluation. So based upon that, our preference, it's up to the board, but our preference would be to, we'd suggest that the board get that information that the engineer's asked for, for him to evaluate before going ahead with a secret deck and a conditional. And then there's some miscellaneous comments, again, on information on the maps to be provided, but that's the extent of our comments. And the engineer might want to comment further. You do have, the additional comments that came in on the sight line are, came by email, dated August 19th, and those were sent out to you. They should be in your packet. And the applicant has them as well.
All right, so it sounds like there's still a couple little, a couple things hanging out, but... Let me go to Don for issues, I think, you know, some topography here to be concerned about.
Sure. I don't want to contradict Eric, but our opinion was that nothing that we have here is going to be an issue. We did want some clarifications on the stormwater, but we did look over the sight line, the sight lines themselves. They both overlap on the corner. There may need to be a little bit more work done on the one sight line than is shown, but it's owned by the... but it's owned by the applicant, so the applicant can easily, you know, if they need to cut down another foot, then they can easily cut down another foot. They also, you know, we need to, we wanna see a, you know, a maintenance agreement across that lot from one lot to the other, but again, they're both owned by the same person at this moment, so as long as we get that settled before the subdivision, final subdivision, I think we'll be okay. We are looking for some sort of way to slow the drainage down before it hits the road. But again, we don't, we don't think that's really going to be a, a big issue for them to be able to handle, they have plenty of property to be able to do it on, so if you, if the board wants to move forward, that's fine, if you wanna wait and let us evaluate that information, and until next time, we'll be happy to do that.
All right, thanks, Don. Let me ask the applicant, Michelle, is there any, you think there is any blasting with the, putting in the driveways, or?
There's always the possibility, but for the most part, they just plan the hammer.
Okay.
I can never say that there's not gonna be blasting until they encounter the rock and see how hard it is.
All right.
But any blasting wouldn't require a blasting permit and would be done in former town codes.
Bunch of hoops to jump to, through for that, just concerned about the neighboring houses, so. All right. So, for public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Is there anyone in the audience tonight which to comment on this project? No one signed up for this, all right. Again, raise your hand in Zoom or star six to unmute your phone and talk. All right, let me hold off on whether we're gonna adjourn or not till I go around the board. Let's see if the board's inclined to move ahead tonight, or adjourn to another meeting. Peter? Peter, you on?
Yes.
Oh, what's your-
You know, when you consider, when you look at the steep slopes and the curve in the road, I'd feel a lot more comfortable, there are a lot of blanks here that have to be filled in, I would rather wait and-
All right.
Have those i's dotted and the t's crossed.
One more time. Okay, Nicole?
Michelle, I don't know if we asked of this already, it might have been brought up, but I don't remember. Was there any tree clearing that needed to be done?
Yes, there was some tree clearing.
Okay, and it was already done?
Yes, it was done before the deadline, the end of March deadline, because technically, this is the first, this applic-, even though I saw you in March, the application, that was just a pre-meeting, this subdivision application was officially opened just the last, was my last, was my submission last month.
I mean, my opinion is I don't see why we, we can't go forward, but if others on the board feel like that's not the case, then it's up to you guys.
All right. Rocco, what's your take?
I tend to agree with Peter. Let's see what there is left, and then we'll go from there.
All right, Bob?
Yeah, the same, same opinion. I think, let's wait till all of the information's available, it's safest, safest way to proceed.
All right, make sure we can go ahead with seeker at that point. Yeah, I think almost everything's done, but the sight lines are important, and making sure everything's graded right for drainage, since it is a steep property. It'll be a steeper driveway than most. And you wanna make sure we don't have any ice flows across the driveway, that kind of thing, as well.
So I think we're ready to go with- Carl and Sarah, I did neglect to point out one thing. The Department of Health had indicated that there's a DOH approval required, which is unusual for a two lot subdivision, but they said that there's a, they, their approvals are required for a pump station on, for the new, the added lot 55B. So, if, I had just suggested the board, the simple resolution indicating an uncoordinated review, and the board could still do that, and that way, if there ends up being any other agency approvals by them, or-
Okay.
Then, it would, you know, keep the board's seeker review and determination to itself and allow other agencies to proceed as they see fit.
Right, that sounds fair. And their comments are, and that led their Department of Health letter dated July 29th, that's included? All right, let's move forward with A and C then, Nicole.
All right, I move that the planning board determined that it will conduct an uncoordinated seeker review of the proposed project as an unlisted action.
Second.
Moved and seconded for an uncoordinated review, called to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board adjourned the subdivision public hearing to September 17th, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn the hearing, called to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And myself, aye, motion passes five to zero, and-
I move that the planning board determined that this application is incomplete, to defer action on the application and to direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following, one through seven.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, called to question, all's in favor, by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes five to zero. All right, thanks, everyone, a couple, clean up those comments and see you in September, hopefully.
Thank you.
Next up, Duchess Dodge Inventory Parking Amended Site Plan. Who's on to represent Duchess Dodge tonight?
Bill Polwell, engineer for the applicant.
All right, Bill? All right, any, what's the changes since last time? I think you've added some additional landscaping and such, so.
Yeah, the, most of the comments at the last meeting involved landscaping. At the request of the board, we added trees in the island area between the existing parking lot now and the proposed Phase One, where the line of evergreens were removed. So we included deciduous trees in those areas to provide, to provide landscaping, but it also allows visibility to the parking behind it, to bring the two parking lots together. And then what we did was we focused on putting more evergreens and more landscaping between the Phase One parking, which is next to the garage, and the back property line to Mrs. Kassortis, so not only do we have the fence in that area now, as we beefed up the landscaping between the parking lot that's being proposed and the residential parcel in the back. We also extended the tree line and the fence line along the back southerly border, along Mrs. Kassortis's house, so that the last tree is beyond the line of sight from that home to the last parking space. Again, at their, as a result of the discussions that we had at the, the meeting.
Set line-
And then I did talk to the, the owner, an applicant, and about the timeline. His preference would be to have a few years to really see how this plays out, so we came up with a three to five year timeline, as far as building out Phase Two, that would be workable with the board. So those are the two main issues that we addressed in submitting back to you for this meeting.
All right, thanks, Bill.
Yep.
And we go to Kristen for her recommendation?
Thank you, Bill, for the overview. The application is on this evening to open a public hearing. Staff is recommending that you open and adjourn the public hearing and defer action. There are still some outstanding comments, as Bill indicated, they are requesting essentially another three to five years in addition to what would typically be a two-year approval timeframe to button everything up and complete a project. I had some other comments related to, and that's a conversation that I think the board ultimately needs to come to a conclusion on, of how long they would be willing to extend that, or feel comfortable with extending that, and that's something that would have to be worked out between staff and, and legal counsel for the board. There are some comments related to landscaping, I just, I found a little bit, there were some inconsistencies and just some of the labeling was a bit off, so it was a bit hard to follow, and just some suggestions that the planning board might encourage the applicant to pursue for their next submittal. I did actually perform a quick site visit this morning and took some photos around the site and shared them with the planning board, because sometimes pictures do a lot to, to bring the realness of the site and situation to fruition, or in the realm of reality for the board, to really encourage them to make a, a good decision, or encourage them to, to have more discussions with the applicant about how they proceed with landscaping and just the visibility and the nature of visibility by the school that's to the south of this property, in addition to Mrs. Kassortis's house. And, and I know that there has been some robust landscaping proposed, even since the last submittal, there's been 22 additional trees proposed to increase some of that landscaping and buffering. And then there was some discussion, I know the board had some comments and, and concerns possibly about the structures remaining in the back portion of the lot, which I know are gonna come, come up as we go around the board for some comments, so I will, at that time, probably defer to our counsel, Lisa Cobb, so I don't stumble my way through that, and she can clearly speak to that. But I do think it's important to note, lastly, that the property that we're, we're, we're looking at currently, it was rezoned, a portion of that back lot, if you recall, was rezoned, and then there was a merger that took place, there was a middle parcel that ran north and south, and then that, that parcel was merged into the front part of the lot, and then they actually created a, a lot line adjustment to include the, what would now be Phase Two inventory parking area. So now this is one lot, and it's best depicted on the, on sheet SP1, there's an inset that shows the extent of the parcel and the properties in question. I did have a conversation with the building department, there, there are some violations that are still outstanding about how the buildings on the back part of this lot, or previous lot before this lot line revision took place, how they're secured, they're not secured based on New York State Building Code standards. So again, this conversation, I, I have a feeling is gonna, you know, go on, and I think that it's appropriate to defer action, and we can button up some of these items that I, I think require further conversation perhaps with the applicant and counsel offline, or, you know, we'll go from there, but, and one of those three structures that was a part of a town board decision about securing structures was actually north of what remained, the one-story garage that remains in the middle part of the lot. That once, that structure that was in the middle portion of the lot is actually no longer present, so-
Right.
There's no need to worry about securing that structure, because it no longer exists. And the, the one-story garage is, is actually, you know, the, the building department, water sewer, everyone is involved with knowing what's going on with that garage, that's now gonna be used for storage-
Yep.
Was gonna be used for detailing and all of that, but, you know, that has, that has since changed.
Right.
So with that, I would probably just turn it over to Don if he has any comments from the engineering side, otherwise, I'm all set.
Sounds good, thanks, Kristen. Go to Don with that, there is some topography here as well, stormwater, et cetera.
Yeah, we, we had one spot where we wanted some work done as part of Phase One, as opposed to leaving it for the future, so installing a swale and doing some grading, because the trees are gonna be close to there, and we, we wanted a note, and that was pretty much it.
Okay, thanks, Don. Hey, we don't want to, we gotta take a look at the, the extension of how many years. Lisa, do you have any comments on that, or on the houses?
So, I don't have a strong opinion on the extension. I, I would encourage the board not to go out too far, simply because other circumstances may change, but as a legal matter, I think the board has some discretion in order to craft the resolution in a way that includes extensions, and the board has done that before, so that's really board determination. As to the house issue, I would ask Bill to advise the applicant that the conformance with the requirements of the resolution for securing the buildings is required, and that the applicant should contact the building department and make sure that they're done. My understanding is that they may be somewhat secured, but they're not secured in conformance with the resolution, so, and if that doesn't happen, then that could be an enforcement action which would prevent the planning board, might prevent the planning board from moving forward. I know some of the structures, at least, my understanding is one of the structures may be on this parcel that's the subject of the planning board's site plan, and they can address that as part of this site plan approval, but I would hate for there need to be any enforcement action to go back through the 20, the earlier resolution about the buildings.
And actually, just to clarify, since I know the answer to that, the, the property that's, the building or structure that was on this property that we are now reviewing is no longer there, it's gone.
Just, just the garage.
So that's the only one? There's not a structure still shown on this property?
Yes, there is.
The old garage.
Well, yes, there is, Peter, but that is not one.
Two-story residence-
Yes.
That is on, as part of this parcel.
No.
Can I, can I jump in there for a second?
Sure.
Parcel line's been drawn.
I'm just gonna clarify what's going on. Part of the, the original application, where we received a site plan approval for extension of the parking lot, that was part of an application for an amended site plan with the Duchess Dodge facility, or dealership. We submitted a second application, which, which was a subdivision application, which ultimately combines all of one of the parcels with the Duchess Dodge dealership, and part of a second parcel with the Duchess Dodge dealership, to create one big parcel that the second application, which was the site plan, was previously approved. So with that site plan approval and the subdivision that occurred, we removed the house that remains with the property that was transferred or combined with the Duchess Dodge site, so the Duchess Dodge lot does not have any house on it now. The one house that was on the lot was removed.
Right.
The only other structure beyond the, the two buildings in the front is the garage, which is gonna be storage. So that leaves the two existing houses in the back. Those two houses still remain, and they remain on their own lots, actually under a different ownership, so the ownership for those two lots is different than the ownership for the Duchess Dodge site.
You know, when that, when that deed was filed, because I looked at parcel access today, and it has that two-story structure by the Kassortis's house as being on, on your parcel.
Well, then that, I can't answer that question. You know, that was probably still in place. I believe that house was removed in the fall in preparation of doing the, building out the parking lot per the site plan.
We're gonna have to follow up on that just to be on the safe side, but it seems to me that it's August now, if you had transferred the title last fall, that it would be reflected in the parcel access today.
Yeah, there's usually a delay between the filing and updating parcel access. That's normal.
I understand, but not 10 months.
And then now with, and now with the COVID situation, it's delaying everything more.
Well, I think what might have happened too is with the COVID, it was a shutdown since March, so, you know, possible things could have been delayed with that as well. But I can tell you as a fact, the house no longer exists on the parcel. It's 100% has been removed. And again, that just leaves the two parcels in the back.
Can you help us out then? What is the house that's located right by the entrance to the Kassortis's house on Neem's Way? What's, what house is that?
That's one of the two houses that remained and remained on lots as part of the subdivision when that was created. The third house, which was closer to the Duchess Dodge site, which was on the land that was transferred to the Duchess Dodge site, was removed.
Right, that house was near the garage, Peter.
It was right next to the garage, correct.
Yeah, that two-story residence that has the, basically condemned notice on it, on your SP1, it appears to be on your parcel. If you look at SP1, where it says two-story frame.
It's a separate parcel in the back.
Yeah, that's a, that's a separate parcel. That's not part of this lot.
Okay, gotcha. There's a parcel line right at the driveway there, Peter.
I'm good. Thank you.
So those two are separate.
So what I really want to point out is the applicant, he has involvement with the other entity that owns those, those two homes. So, you know, we're not trying to get away from that, and he wants to obviously work with the town and do what's needed. He was under the impression that the work that he did was good enough to secure the homes temporarily until he comes in with his renovation. But his position was he was gonna do that through the building department since they're separate parcels and under separate ownership.
Yeah, Bill, I would.
I can tell you, I get that they're not on the parcel that's under review, but I can tell you those houses are not secure whatsoever.
Yeah. Bill, I had a quick conversation with Wayne in the building department, so I would just encourage whoever you can on your end to reach out to them, reach out to Wayne directly or if I need to help facilitate that conversation, because Wayne had some very, very off the top of his head, very specific things that need to be done to secure the first floor of all of, all of that. And to that end, I would just also encourage any information you can provide about the, the remains, as it's identified, of the two-story barn in the back. That's basically a secret garden of trees. I, I don't know, that's another structure that looks like it has some broken windows and some other things going on back there, so.
Right.
Again, just having that conversation with the building department is strongly encouraged at this point because, as I understand it, it's in violation of what, of what stands.
Okay. I, I will reach out to him tomorrow regarding this and, and we'll get that ball rolling.
Yeah, I just pulled up parcel access. It is out of date, just to let you know. All right. This is, let me, I move we open a public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved in second, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Is there anyone in the audience wish to comment on this application? Raise your hand with Zoom or unmute your phone with star six to talk.
Did I not put a date in?
No.
Oh. Bill, do you think, well, the submission deadline would be on Monday, so would you be looking to come back in October?
I would. I'd like to get this done as soon as we can because we're really trying to get the construction completed on this as soon as possible with the winter coming up because, you know, where he's temporarily parking the cars in order to build it.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just want to know if you'd be able to provide a complete submittal on Monday for the app deadline for September.
I'm gonna do my best. I mean, I just have, what, Friday and a little bit of Monday. But looking at the comments, I don't see why you'd be able to.
All right, no, no one has raised their hands, I gather, all right? So at this point, I move we adjourn the public hearing to September 17th, 2020.
Second.
Moved in second, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, let's go around the board for additional comments at this time, and, oh, hold on, I just want to ask Lisa one more time, do you have any legal comments on, you know, the site plan for the parking versus, you know, the houses are on separate parcels now?
Right, so if the houses are on separate parcels and they are under separate ownership, then I don't think, I think the planning board's review is confined to the site before it. So I would encourage the applicant to, you know, reach out so that it doesn't end up with a violation because that still exists regardless of, you know, whoever the owner is would be faced with a violation. So I think it's good that the board have that discussion, but the board's review and notes on the plans and anything like that are confined to the structures that are on the site that the board's reviewing.
All right, thanks for making that clear, Lisa. All right, go around the board for additional comments. Peter?
I think the landscaping plan looks good. As far as the timeline is concerned, you know, I think we really have to determine what's going to occur during each section of the timeline so that we don't have, so that we're not chasing. And those are my only comments.
All right, thanks, Peter. Nicole?
Yep, so I just want to talk really quick about the site visit that happened today, if we could. Couple of pictures we're taking from your prop, from the Duchess Dodge property, and it looked like a lot of trees were taken down, and now the school in the back is very exposed. That's a elementary school, that's Nassau Elementary School. The school kids there are grade K through five. I don't know what plans are in place to, to put up further screening back there, but I can see that possibly being a safety hazard. You have young kids back there, and if you have vehicles close to that school or strangers walking around close to that school, I could see that being a safety hazard. So I just wanted to bring that up and see what type of comments you have, or maybe you want to come back to us with, with some comments on that.
I could, I could speak to that. We are proposing a stockade fence along the back part of the property from where the garage is around where the parking is, so it will actually be fenced off. I don't know how familiar the rest of the board is, but you have the school, and then you have an open property, which is Mrs. Kassortis's house, and then you have the back of the Duchess Dodge lot. So as you can see from the plan, we're proposing a stockade fence across that entire back lot, the back of the, back of the lot, and then up of the side of Mrs. Kassortis's house. So we are providing fencing that would deter any, anybody from coming through there. And then again, with the plan that we just submitted, we really beefed up the landscaping to mitigate the trees that were being cut down, that row of evergreens that were cut down. So aside from doing the fence and the additional landscaping that we're proposing, we feel there's a good buffer there, a good visual buffer, and we also feel with the fence, that would really prevent anybody from coming through there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Let me just clarify, Bill, that, you know, that, that fence and the, if I look in your GU1 sheet, you know, you show the Phase One where the fence and the landscaping extends beyond that, would that all be part of Phase One, that whole fence?
Yep, the phase, the fencing for Phase One will actually start at the back of the existing parking lot, and then it's gonna go along the southern property line and, and south of the garage to the corner.
Yep.
And then it's gonna take a 90-degree turn and go north behind the garage up to the corner where the stormwater pond is, and then the fence is gonna continue along the back southerly line, which separates the Duchess Dodge back parcel with Mrs. Kassortis's house. So we have quite a bit of fencing that's being shown as part of Phase One, which would really provide visual screening as well as protection from anybody walking through there. That, that whole property line's gonna be inaccessible once the fence is up.
Okay, so, I mean, we have the dotted line, so there's no...
It's the line, it's the line that goes along the property line, and then it's got squares on it?
Yeah, I know the fence, I know the fence symbol, but the dotted lines for Phase One do not encompass all of the fence on the plot, so it's always...
Oh, I see, yep. We went around with the grading, so we can include the fence. We'll modify the, the Phase One line to include the rest of that fence there.
The fence and those additional trees so that they all have a similar growth pattern? That'd be great. All right, thanks.
Nicole, did you have any insights about the timing, time extension for the approvals?
You know, I, it's, it's, it's really up to you guys, but I think some of this stuff probably has to be done sooner rather than later, so that's, that's all I really have to say.
All right. Bob, do you have any comments?
No, not, not anything to add what's already been said. I think I agree the, you know, relative to these timelines, the sooner everything is addressed, I think the better it's gonna be over.
All right, thanks, and Rocco?
Yeah, I have also a concern with the timeline. It looks like the three to five years might be excessive because a lot of things can really change, so maybe what was proposed earlier to, to see what's gonna occur would be helpful, but that's my initial take on that. That seems like a long time.
Well, I mean, my two cents is that, you know, I don't want them to be building something they don't need, so I'm okay with extending the timeline a little bit.
Yeah, based on what they're suggesting or asking for, it would be three to five years, so you get two years to complete the project before you would have to come back to the board and that approval expires. So it's in essence, an additional one to three years to complete your, from that two-year timeframe. So do you want to make it a three-year approval timeframe instead of two? Do you want to make it four instead of two? That's, that's kind of, we need some direction from the board about that.
Yeah, I'd be good with four myself, give it an extra two years, because I don't want to have, you know, have them to jump back if they are gonna go ahead, head with it again when the demand requires it, but I don't want to, don't want to build anything excessive.
Carl, it's my, I think the important thing is that everyone's comfortable with how Phase One will look and be, you know, completed, because, you know, like, you know, there is a likelihood that that will be all that's ever done.
Right.
And I think they have done a pretty good job with that, you know, and especially with the additional landscaping and the fence extension further to the west. So it, you know, and you're right in that we don't necessarily want there to be more parking back there if it's not needed, right? So, you know, I don't know that there's much of a downside to giving a little extra time in this particular case.
So you think the five years is all right, or?
Yeah, well, four, you know, depending on what people are comfortable with, but I think that some extension beyond years...
Yeah, I was thinking four for, you know, double our normal extension.
To fol, I'm sorry, Carl. Follow up on what Nicole was, was addressing, and that is if in, I'd like, at least in Phase One, to have the fencing and the landscaping completed to provide that buffer. Even though there's another lot in between the parking area and the school, I would feel a lot more comfortable if the fencing and the landscaping along the parking area were completed in Phase One.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, Billy, he said.
All right, it's really, it's not noted on the map.
No, Bill said he would adjust that dotted line.
You've got on LL1, it doesn't have what phase is gonna be completed, and that's why I really asked the question.
Okay, there's a, there's a Phase One grading and utility plan, and it shows all that.
Yeah, I saw that. But it doesn't have the fencing.
Oh, yeah, it does have the fencing portion, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Bill said he would extend that dotted line around the entire, all the fences and trees so that that would be completed in Phase One.
Good.
Is that correct, Bill?
Correct, and I apologize for that.
Right, it was just, yeah, that wasn't quite clear, so that was, that's good to make that clarification. Anybody, anyone on the board object to four years?
Again, I have no objection to the extension as long as we have a clear understanding of what will be completed in Phase One.
Right. I think we got that set. All right. And we already adjourned the hearing to September, so I think we're ready for the additional motion to defer.
I move the planning board defer action and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following one through four.
And I would add five that the board's okay with the four-year extension, with the extension to four years. Has that been seconded?
Second.
Moved in seconded, call to question, all those in favor? By roll call, Peter?
As long as, again, as part of this resolution, it's understood that we're gonna have a clear understanding of what's gonna be included in Phase One.
Yeah, Peter, I asked them to, to pull out the plans from like grading and utility and to just actually give us two separate landscaping plans, one for Phase One and one for Phase Two, and I can confirm and make sure with Bill if he has any questions about it, about when the fence is going in, and it sounds like it's going in in Phase One, and we'll make sure that it's on the Phase One plan.
So work all that out, pull that out for, those details for the next time.
Aye.
All right, Nicole? Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion passes five to zero. All right, thanks, Bill. I think you get where we're coming from to make sure Phase One stuff is clear on the plans.
Okay, thank you.
And, and see what he can do about those houses to stabilize them, but talk to Wayne in the building department.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
All right, take care. Next up, Mr. Tinkelman, BP3 Springside Development. Let's see who's, can't hear anyone yet.
Hey, can you guys hear us okay?
Oh, still, still a little very quiet, Steve. Can you get closer to a mic or something?
Can you hear me now?
Hmm. I can hear you fine.
Okay.
It's not, not very loud, but...
I hope you're having a nice summer.
Oh, there we go.
We...
Oh, there we go. That's better.
As, as you know how we work here, we're constantly tweaking our projects until we have to, at the last minute, make final decisions. And through some of our exercises, we made a decision, Chris and I, for adding some public communal spaces on the top floor of the building. Because it, once you're going up four stories, we reevaluated, and it's such a nice view from up there, and to be able to do some nice things for our tenants seemed like a really great idea. So we had discounted it earlier on in the design process, but realized that in the entry tower, which is that, you know, copper-colored form in the corner, the public spaces were a little too small, and they could be really nice duplex units. So those two units are how we got from 21 to 23, and being able to, and it's the construction of those two units that's going to allow us to build that structure up on the roof. So that's a change, other than advancing with Ken Castamano, LRC, and other consultants on the project, that's really, and it's a, it's a nice change, we think, in terms of creating a sense of place in a, you know, a space in a post-COVID world that makes an apartment building a better place to live.
Okay, that sounds good.
So yes, is there any questions? Is that the best way to handle this tonight, Eric or Chairman or?
Yeah, I think that'll, that'll be good, Steve. Thanks for the intro. You gave us a nice presentation last time with all the renderings and things, so that's, and you've made some modifications, but we'll get to that with an architectural review. So we'll go to Eric for his recommendation.
Sure. There's a, the recommendation you have from staff is to open a public hearing, and then if you close it, then to adopt a secret declaration determination, a NEDDEC, and to grant conditional special use permit and site plan approval for the project. It does require a special use permit for the mixed residential use, mixed residential commercial use, and for the height. There's a special incremental height requirement, which is subject to planning board's special use permit. They, the changes in the plans, they've been reviewed, they, they look okay. The parking does still work. The planning board has discretion to allow the parking split between on, between off-street and on, on-street and off-site, off-street parking. They are providing it. They've updated a lot of the information, there's some tweaks. So we're, we think it's good to go. The board will get to see the clarifications to the, to the fifth floor as part of architectural review or if they have any questions. We had a couple of questions about the pavilion. It's unclear if it's a closed structure or partially closed or not. We have asked that it be designated as an amenity and not for specific use as proposed, but to note that on the plans. That's pretty much it. Comments from Duchess County Planning came in today with regard to street trees for shading and some lighting clarifications. The board should discuss it with, discuss the items to the applicant and can proceed.
All right, thank you, Eric.
I think there's also some comments from traffic.
Yeah, I was going to ask, go to Mark, for any secret traffic issues?
Yes, so we had provided a letter to the applicant for a review of the recently submitted documents. We had some comments. We agreed with Mazer Consulting in their decision distance of 10 feet from the travelway for the site distance analysis that they did. However, they, they mentioned some recommendation of advanced signing at the driveways that should be depicted on the plan. And also, we should just make sure that the applicant confirmed that the landscaping does not impede those site distances. And then also, Mazer in their site distance analysis, they showed the removal of one parking space, which is depicted on many of the plans, but there's two plans that don't depict that. It's really just a consistency item. Then the last one related to site distances, we were, just wanted the applicant to consider the site distance of vehicles coming from the arterial up Springside and making a right turn on Parkview Terrace, as that's not a stop approach or uncontrolled approach. We just wanted to see the, you know, there's something that can be done there to warn drivers as they come to that newly proposed western driveway of the site. There is a warning sign that could potentially be modified on that approach of Springside Avenue. And then the last comment that I had was just if the applicant could look into or, you know, discuss the, the issue of the uncurbed section on Springside Avenue. We'll have the, request the highway superintendent to make the determination, but it was left uncurbed to maintain the drainage patterns. And we're just concerned for pedestrians, if, if in the wintertime, water flows from the roadway across the sidewalk and maybe freezes and potentially causes an issue for pedestrians. So that's just something that the applicant should discuss and highway superintendent should make a determination on.
All right, thanks, Mark. Yeah, that's, that freezing thing, we've had other issues with that, where we've had to put curbs in to prevent the water on the sidewalks, so that should be reviewed. And what were you recommending for, say, Springside Avenue to Parkview? Something like a yield sign or a?
So coming up Springside Avenue, there's actually a turn-ahead warning sign, a turn warning sign. It's a yellow sign with a, a black arrow that goes straight and turns right to reflect the conditions of the geometry of the roadway. What we're recommending is that the applicant modify that sign to, I'll call it, add in a, a kind of a leg to that sign to show the location of the driveway so that it warns drivers as they're approaching from Springside that there's a driveway as they exit the turn there, just as a warning to drivers coming in that direction.
Okay, got it. Yeah, the traffic will, I mean, it's kind of a uncontrolled intersection there, but the traffic's going to get busier in that area with this development. All right, great. Let me go to Don for any final engineering comments on this project?
Our list includes some easements that we need to see, some clarity on the water and sewer usage, again, some clarity on the SWIP, mostly because we weren't involved in the original SWIP review, but all in all, most of our comments are pretty well taken care of.
All right, thanks, Don. This is on for public hearings, so I move, we open a public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Anyone in the audience wishes to make comments on this application? Can use the Zoom feature to raise your hand and speak, or open your mic on your phone, star six. Or star nine in, on the phone to raise your hand, we'll see that as well. Nothing, seeing nothing, I move, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, close the public hearing for this project. Called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Let's go around the board for final comments then. Start with Bob.
I apologize, I haven't had a chance to go out there and look at where this is going to be, but is there any other structure in the area that's five stories high? I'm just curious, is this going to look at a place in correspond, correspondence with the rest of the neighborhood?
Question for, for us?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. The, the building essentially is, is actually a four-story building. The, the structure on the, on the fifth floor that we talked about is only a percentage of the entire floor, so it's recessed back on, on all sides, or on, on most of the sides. So it, it will, it will read as, as a four-story building. There, you know, so that there's, you know, the setbacks, there's a public space, outdoor public space, which is facing towards the church, and, you know, the rest of it is just roofing areas where the, where the rooftop structure isn't located. There aren't any other structures nearby that are, you know, of this scale. The ordinance, you know, does allow for this, so it is, you know, through a special use permit. And the, the heights of the buildings behind it are about the same height because they're kind of built on a hill in the back, and they have, you know, strong pitch roofs and all that. So the, the scaling of the, of this new building is, is not out of line with what we've built already within Van Nuys Place.
In the, whatever, four and a half stories or whatever you want to call it, is there lighting on that building that might be intrusive to, you know, people living in that general area?
Not at all.
Okay, I, that's all I've got for now. Thanks.
Yeah, good question, Bob. Yeah, as Steve pointed out, the, you know, I think it's their two-story apartments across the street, but they're way up on the hill, so the roof of those buildings might even line up or be higher than, than this building. All right, Rocco?
Let's see, I believe that this is in the Arlington district.
Yeah, ATC.
And I think there are other four-story buildings already there, aren't there?
Yes, we, I was just talking about immediately around us, there are other buildings of this height in the center.
Right, that's what I thought. Okay, well, I kind of liked the way you read, you redid the outside of, of the building like that. I think it's a very nice job. I don't have any other questions at this time.
All right, thanks, Rocco. And Nicole?
Mr. Tinkelman, I had a quick question for you.
Okay.
I know that you're going to have about, what, 23 apartments in this building?
Yes.
Okay, how many bedrooms?
I would say that it's broken up roughly a third and a third and a third, where there are a third or two bedrooms, and maybe that, do you have the exact number? You know, the, then I think, you know, we'll give you the exact numbers here, but they're split up between one bedrooms, one bedrooms with a den, and two bedrooms.
Okay. Also, the pavilion, are you putting lighting in there?
There won't be any, there'll be lighting inside the structure, but there won't be any lighting that's on the outside of that, that building at this time.
Okay, and the lighting inside the pavilion, they'll be downlit lighting so that it doesn't go out and be obtrusive to the houses or to the arterial?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. And Peter?
I think it looks great. It's going to be a, a real asset to that part of our community, so. It's my only comment.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and I wanted to thank you for adding the sidewalk connection from your building door out to the Route 44 sidewalk, or whatever you call it, to Height Avenue. It's not Height here, it's Maples, right? So that will help pedestrian movements. Although I see it's not on all your site, it's on the site plan but not on all your sheets, so you might want to clean, clean that up for final signature. I see it on the PZ01 sheet, but it's not on some of the landscaping sheets. So that's my only comment, and I think it looks good as well. Let me look over, and as I said, as Mark said, you gotta make sure that, that stormwater is, issues addressed, so there's no ice on the sidewalks. And I think your changes will, will be better amenities for the residents. So I think we're ready for a, for seeker motion.
I move that the planning board as seeker lead agency determine that the Springside Development Project would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the seeker negative declaration for an unlisted action dated August 20th, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded for seeker, called to question, all is in favor by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional special use permit approval and conditional site plan approval for the Springside Development Application subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness in, but not, but not limited to the following one through 13.
Second.
Moved and seconded, grant conditional, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes five to zero. And you prepared to show some architecture tonight? Steve?
I'm going to turn this over to Chris Mansfield, if I can, as in the project architect.
All right.
Sure, so I know you guys have seen this model, but for the architectural review, I'll, I'll bring it up just to show it again. You also should have received a packet with the materials being proposed, just as we are on Zoom, so I know I can pass around physical materials, but I do have those here, if there's any questions.
Can you speak up just, just a little bit?
Essentially, what we're showing from a material palette is, this, this first layer here is, is a masonry material, the color being called a mountain mist, which is the first sheet on your page in the packet that's come out. For this area, we're proposing a composite lap siding, that's a semiticious board. The color we're looking to use is an arctic white, which was also in that packet.
Can you speak up, can you speak up just a little bit more? It's a little bit tough to hear.
These are a semiticious board as well, they're a party board reveal system.
There we go.
Or comparable, it's a composite material, and we're looking to use a light mist color on that. And then we're proposing the same composite sort of panel system in a different color on the stair tower here. This is a dark gray, it's a smooth texture, but it is, it is a composite. And we're showing that in a, in a copper tone on this, this cube form, and, you know, obviously, from an architectural standpoint, we're lining up our, our joints and the reveals in these, they kind of make sense compositionally with the windows and through the flow of the building. Other than that, I know the board has seen this, this model before, so, you know, unless you have anything to add, Steve, I would, I would put a question.
All right, thanks.
Are those, I'm sorry, Carl.
Go ahead, Peter.
I wanted to ask, on the north sided, are all the HVAC units contained in that one area on the north roof?
Yep, they're all in this, in this contained area here, and screened off accordingly.
Uh huh. There's no, is there an elevator?
There is an elevator, yep. Yep, there's an elevator in this tower, and there are access via a door here.
Great, okay, thanks.
All right. Anyone else have any comments on the architecture presented?
Carl, I just noticed that the, the, the record, the board might choose to conduct or waive the architectural review on the pavilion.
Mm-hmm. All right. Can you just spin around your 3D view to show the pavilion there? Can you just spin around your 3D view to show the pavilion there?
Yeah, so the pavilion, you know, from a material standpoint, you know, we do have it here, the, you know, the idea compositionally was to make it match the, the main structure in form and scale, and make it so that it fits the overall composition of the site. So these materials, you can see, are the same as kind of on that front cube structure on the south side, this is that same composite tile in the same copper color. We're working with the column line at the base of the building here, you know, in this form, and, you know, carrying some of the same black metal colors that are used on the building, in the windows and such, you know, in this, in this building's composition. So we tried to make it fit, you know, the nature and style of the architecture of the main structure and, and the site.
And what's the roofing material of that?
That would be a standing seam metal roof.
Are, are there any windows in the pavilion?
Not at this time.
Chris, could you just zoom around to the, maybe the, I guess it would be the west elevation, the front view of the pavilion?
The south, yeah.
We're south, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, there we go.
Well, we submitted it, so we, we've looked at this both ways, as an open and enclosed pavilion, the, the elevations that you guys received show up with the enclosure, and the only mod, the only difference is a curtain wall system that encloses here and here. You know, in our studies, we haven't updated this model to show that, but our feeling is that we would like this to be an enclosed structure, you know, with a system that we can open this up, you know, on, on nice weather days, so we can serve the uses on the site.
I'm, just, Eric, I, I've just, I don't know if the zoning administrator reviewed it as an enclosed structure.
Well, you know, what I, and I would like to suggest then is, we could show this as a placeholder and, you know, be willing to, you know, let this go back to the zoning administrator, you know, and make sure that that's nice and clean in the process, and then we'll, we'll submit, you know, more detailed drawings so that you can, you know, make a, a better judgment on this, since, you know, the model shows one thing and what we submitted shows another. It doesn't slow down the bigger project, but I'm completely comfortable coming back to the board if you so wish, you know, with the suggestion.
The reason I asked you about the windows on the, on the street side is that particularly at night, it might become an attractive nuisance without some kind of exposure.
Again, I, I, I respect that, you know, it could be that at nighttime that this is completely closed anyway, the way we're thinking about it.
Uh huh.
Open for events, you know, in, in good weather and during the daytime, but again, we can clarify that with you. Your concern on that, Mr. Finelli, is really about safety?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, also, you know, town, once you have an enclosed structure, the town code doesn't have windows on streets, on facing, you know, buildings facing streets.
Okay.
So we, so maybe we want to, I don't know, what's the board's preference to, to let the department handle that, or, or we can have them come back with the architecture of the pavilion after he clarifies that with the zoning?
I think the department can handle that simply, we can just, we can move on, I think.
All right.
So just so I understand for that review, so, the board, so for now, the board is expecting that this is going to be an open structure as presented in this, in this picture here?
Well, Carl is, Carl is right, you can't, you can't have a, a, a structure with a solid wall, I think according to our own code.
Yeah, may I recommend that we, that, I think, and this is where we were headed, that we not include this in the current approval, that it be, as Steve suggested, a placeholder?
Good.
And that we, that Steve would come back for architectural approval of that feature once a little bit more clarification with staff and with the zoning department and so on gets taken care of?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sounds fine.
Yeah.
Sounds good, because there's, it sounds like there's some issues to resolve with it. All right, what about, anyone else on the board have architectural comments?
No, I mean, I, I think that an open concept like this would be very nice, I mean, I understand the safety of it, and possibly making it a closed structure, but open like this is also nice, too, I think it's a little bit more inviting, but, you know, it's possible you could have trouble there, too, so I, I don't really, I don't really know.
Mm-huh.
But, um, yeah, what Mike said, it makes sense, so.
I mean, you have to design it to whatever uses you anticipate happening, so.
Yeah, but I, you know, I look at this and, and immediately I think of, a food truck backs up into the parking lot here, has a couple of tables set up underneath the pavilion, you have people from the apartments coming out, okay, today's Thursday, it's so-and-so food truck day. They come out, they buy some food from whoever is there, and then, you know, go, go sit at these lovely tables, or they go back up to their apartment or whatnot, so, that's, that's why I like this particular design, but, you know, it's, it's really up to what, what they feel, so.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of.
Our, our thinking on this was, was really trying to be exactly that, you know, where it could be open and you could, you could have events or somebody wants to sit in the shade, or you could have a folk singer, or something like that. We also had the, had it enclosed so that in other kinds of weather, you might, you know, have something else inside that would also be appropriate or to protect it at nighttime if we had, if somebody came and, and had an event and you want to be able to make sure their stuff was secure overnight. So we'll come back and clarify that, but we like the flexibility of, to be able to make this the center of our, of our neighborhood here and, and be flexible with the program.
All right, sounds good, Steve. Anyone else on the board, comments, Bob or Rocco?
No, I agree with everything that's been said, let's come back on, on this item.
Nothing from me, Carl.
Yep, I think the, as before, the architecture looks good, even, you know, with your modifications there of the building. So I move we accept architecture on the main building as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all's in favor by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes five to zero. I move we defer architecture on the pavilion until future meeting. Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call. Vote, Peter?
Aye.
Nope, Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes five to zero. All right, thanks, Steve, good luck.
Steve, if, if the, I, I'm not sure if the color, the color that you displayed on the screen today, I'm not, was that in the packet, the, the elevations that you submitted, or were they all black and white?
Black and white, am I?
I only got black and white.
So, so Steve, could you just give us some, the renderings of the, like, the perspectives as representative of what you displayed with the runaround, the fly-around tonight?
I think in the package that Chris, yeah, dropped off, has the actual colors in there, but we'll do that as well, we'll submit elevations to the bottom.
Yeah, there should be a sheet with rendering images in there, too.
Okay. Oh, okay, got it.
They may have been printed black and white by the print shop, so we can get you those in color, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, great. All right, take care. Next up, we got.
Thank you very much, everybody, for working with us and with Chris, thank you.
All right, take care, Steve. We have a few adjournments to do, Ambassador Inan Institute, I move we adjourn the public hearing to November 19th, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes five to zero. Locust Grove Crossing LLC, I move that we adjourn the public hearing to September 17th, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes five to zero. Next up, Stewart Shop at 2245 South Road, I move we adjourn the public hearing to September 17th, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes five to zero. At this time, I move that we allow public comment on any other items on tonight's agenda. We ask that you please let me your comments in more than three minutes, and the board will consider these comments during the meeting, but not respond to them.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. By, by roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes five to zero. Is there anyone wish to comment on any other items on tonight's agenda? Give it a minute to raise your hand by Zoom, or star six to unmute your phone, or star nine to raise your hand. Scrolling through the attendees here to look for hands raised. No hands. Nope, all right, I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Next up, I see patiently waiting here, Mon Dusus Avenue.
Good evening, members of the board, my name's Louis Kaufman, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, who's the owner of the site. Just quickly, this is the last phase of the development which was started in the city. The city portion already has 139 units that are in service, they're fully occupied, and we're working on the second phase, which is 161 units plus some commercial space. We expect that to come online, there are several, several buildings, so within, you know, probably within the next nine months to 15 months, so that is what the city will look like. The property that's in the town, we are, are, we're requesting 84 units and a 4,000 square foot commercial building. The two residential buildings are, are identical in most ways to two of the buildings that exist already and are in use, so if, in fact, the board wanted to see what they look like, they're up already and you could actually see apartments in there if you were to come and take a, a tour. The, the property is an upscale market rate residential project primarily, and it's attracting right now, at least in the city side, young professionals and empty nesters, well, that's really primary uses, primary residence. The city side has a large outdoor amenity area with three pools, got a clubhouse, got cooking facilities, got pergolas, and that's surrounded by some of the buildings. The, the, the Greenway Trail is already installed through the entire length along the Hudson, it's about 1,400 linear feet, that is already in. The town residents will have, also have an outdoor amenity area, that's going to include a cooking, an outdoor kitchen, some seating, pergola, and that is in, located in between the two residential buildings. There's also, for both residential buildings, there's a, on the top floor, there'll be an indoor community room that then enters out onto an outdoor terrace that overlooks the river. There's also a terrace above the commercial building as well. The, it was a former brownfield, it's been, there's a certificate of completion issued that we're, we're fully compliant with the requirements that the DEC placed upon us, and, and, you know, operating according to that. The Greenway Trail is compliant with the town's LWRP, but, and I will provide, I, I see that, we just received comments this week from a variety of the consultants and the town staff, and we will be addressing that in the next few weeks, and, so I, I don't want to provide any responses until I can, you know, we can fully do that, we're gonna, we're intending to give you a fully updated project assessment, which will hopefully handle all your questions regarding seeker. I have provided a brochure to the board, which I'm going to attempt, if it's okay with you, to share with you. Let us see if I can actually do this, hold on. Is that, is that up there? Doesn't seem to be working. Oh, oh, here it is. There you go. Wow, all right. For this old, for this old dynasty, you have no idea how proud I am of myself.
Lou, I am so proud of you. I knew you could do it.
Okay, so, just briefly, what, what I placed in the brochure for you is, the, the first is, is a site plan. That site plan is actually, I think, 105 on the site, site plans that you have received from Dominic Arico from CT Mail, who's going to follow me momentarily and to provide you with some civil engineering. I've also had some renderings of the exteriors prepared. The first one would be, is between the two residential buildings, and it looks out on the Hudson, so you can see to your left is what we call Building I, to your right is Building J, in between is the pergolas, the seating area, the outdoor dining, and so that's the first rendering. The second rendering is directly in from the river, so you can actually see all three buildings there. In the front is the commercial building, and behind it is the two residential buildings. The riprap looks a lot more steeper than in fact it is, it's a gentle sloping from the Greenway Trail into the river. Then we are looking, in the, in the third picture, we're looking northeast, so you get a full view of the commercial building from the, you know, the south, the southern corner of this commercial building with the residential buildings behind it. Next, after that, is the, the three buildings looking directly north, I guess from the city area, and finally, if you were standing on the terrace or in Building I, you would, and looking north, you would see, again, the seating area with the pergolas, the cooking facilities, and Building J. So those are your rendering, so you could get an idea of what it will look like when it's completed. As I said, those buildings, I and J, are, are up already, really, they're, in, in, they are two buildings that surround our pool area, so you could get a very good idea of what they look like right now. I have also provided elevations of all four sides of both buildings, they may look similar because they are, but we did give you both buildings, and that was provided by the architect, by Mike. And that was provided by the architect, by Mike McCormick. And he's not with us tonight, but, you know, he will ultimately be with you, hopefully at the next meeting, and can walk in that. The last elevation is of the commercial building. It is a one-story building. And it has, like I said, it will have some, a large terrace above it, which is depicted by cute little figures in that elevation. Finally, we have photographs, well, these are renderings, I could have actually taken photographs, of the amenities for the project. These include the pool area, the gym, the clubhouse. There's an interior clubhouse. It's got a pool room, eating facility. Then there's a, I guess that's a better picture on the second page of the clubhouse. And, oh, those are the eating facilities. And finally, if I could see that. These are just additional renderings of the areas in the city side. I have also included, and these, I believe, are photographs. These are actually existing, of the interiors of the apartments, you know, depicted. There's the kitchen, there's a bedroom with the outdoor slider. There's a double sink bathroom in there, and a, and that's another picture of the living area that looks at the bar by the kitchen. So those are, you know, that's an idea of what we are planning to build there. And I was, and so I think if it's all right with you, I would turn it over to our engineer to go through the plans, if that's acceptable to you.
All right. Thanks, Lou.
So Lou, you're gonna stop sharing your screen now?
Well, okay. We'll see if I'm as good at that as I was at getting it up there. Let's see. How's that?
Perfect.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. It's, let me, Dominic Arribo.
All right. Hi, board. I'm gonna turn my video on. It looks like I'm in a car. I am. So, but I haven't worked out. Let me turn my screen up a bit and get me.
Please tell us you're not sharing your screen while you're driving.
I'm waiting, I'm actually ahead. Board means going at the same time as other boards to go live. So I'm sitting in the park. As soon as I get done with you, I can go to that board. So, multi-class. First to point out is that everybody's probably with, only change that was for this property that's approved to allow the tenant to go forward. We took very good care of not changing anything. The layout is primarily the same. Locations of things, the location of the commercial building, the green, the access drives, everything is the same. Really didn't change anything. What we did change were...
I think, I think we're losing them.
Yeah.
Oh, we lost them.
We'll ask them for a second.
Maybe skip the video then.
Me now again?
We can hear you.
What we did, I more to the town and what we have provided is our utility plans, our stormwater plans. Everything has been designed and date to a preliminary level for review. This is the stormwater plan. It shows our collecting of, how we're collecting all the water, and we just start to a treatment CDS system in this location here. That will be approved for, for the, in property within the city as well as in the town. Next.
All right.
The next one is the utility plan. And again, water, sewer, all comes, this is the city line right here, the town line. Water and sewer is extended up to these, and so our connection here, showing sewer, is connecting to the existing sewer line. Water is being connected up here as well.
All right. We can't see, actually see the plans, but we're following along on the, on the plans that I have.
I'm getting dropped. I'll try to keep, apparently my connection is going in and out. I was listening to you for an hour and a half. Fine. I know there's comments, as Lou mentioned, comments that we got from the town and the staff and from county. I don't believe there's any of those comments that we can address, and we can address the suggestion that it's been given to us by the town.
We're starting to lose it. We're losing it.
I'll leave it. At that, we, maybe you have some specific questions they might like to ask as far as what improvements we are making and other improvements that you like.
All right. You're kind of fading in and out a little bit. We'll move on. Thanks for the, look at the plans. Let me go to Kristen for...
You gotta love technology, right?
Yep.
Bringing us together in hard times and ever so complicated. But anyway, so Dom, I do appreciate...
Can you share my screen?
Dom, we're gonna, we're just gonna go ahead and move on, because it sounds like you're having some trouble, and, and we get the gist of what you're doing. And I know that you and I have caught up a little bit offline, so I'll try to help bring everyone up to speed super quick. Right now, Lou's nodding his head. Okay. So, yeah, so thank you for the project overview. This, this project has obviously been a long time coming. It has extensive site history, review history amongst both municipalities and many boards. So for this evening, the town planning board, excuse me, is reviewing the, obviously, the portion of the project that is located within the town. There's a full set of plans. There's some renderings to give the planning board an idea, and some background and project history and overview. As part of this review effort, we are also looking to Liz Axelson, who is with CPL, our other planner here, who has some, some knowledge about the Seeker review, and will formally be reviewing the project for Seeker. Myself will be, I, myself will be reviewing for site plan review. We have Mark Patraro from the town reviewing for the traffic side of things. We had a pre-application meeting, which Dom was able to be a part of, and Lou, and we were able to include many of the town departments, if not all of them, sewer, water, fire. We did have Fairview Fire District a part of the conversation, and these plans were circulated to them for review. So again, this is a preliminary, you know, look, but it is a detailed first look at this project for the town portion of the project. And as it was noted, so there's two residential buildings proposed. There is a commercial building proposed. I think, you know, staff's gonna wanna know a little bit more about the outdoor elements when it comes down to really solidifying them and marking them up on the plans and providing some details, understanding a little bit more about accessibility from the parking areas. And again, we sort of covered this big picture in our plans, or I'm sorry, in our comments that were provided to the applicant earlier this week. Understanding what the use of the commercial space will be like, and how this part of the property is going to, you know, interact with the adjacent municipalities' portion of the property, and making sure everything's sort of cohesive. There are some, you know, outstanding items. We're gonna be talking about recreation fees as they relate to the number of bell, I'm sorry, bedrooms in the, on the site. You know, sort of formalizing some of the agreements that, that need to be formalized now that this part of the project is coming to fruition in the town related to the Greenway Trail that was mentioned. We'll be looking at this for, you know, pretty, you know, in depth, just to take a good, hard look and do our due diligence from a Seeker component. The city of Poughkeepsie was actually the lead agency for the environmental review, so similar to the town board adopting a set of findings, the planning board would be doing, you know, assumingly, a similar, you know, role, or adopting a similar role there for environmental review purposes. And, and going through the site plan review effort, as you would, taking a look at architecture and making sure that it's functionally safe and accessible, and it's meeting the waterfront housing overlay district requirements that were adopted under the town board's review and, and under the district review. And so tonight, again, this is really largely just to provide background to the board and allow the applicant to provide you with some preliminary detailed information to get some, some feedback, and allow them to go forth to provide us with an even more in deep, in detail, or in-depth detailed analysis, and, and move forward from there. So with that, I would turn it over to Liz Axelson, who provided us with a Seeker review, and then Mark for traffic.
All right. Thanks, Kristen. Go ahead, Liz.
Hey, hello. I'm Liz Axelson, senior planner from CPL. Hello, Lou. Hello, Dominic. I've been actually reviewing this project for many years to aid the town board in their consideration of the zoning, and also to work with the planning board to do whatever we review was necessary for the planning board to originally recommend zoning. So I won't go into the history, but I did prepare a memo basically requesting that the project assessment be provided for the planning board to kind of add in the details for the planning board and to package all those materials so that the planning board has an assessment that says, here's what the findings said most recently. Here's how we've addressed these findings. Here are project changes. Lou and Dominic and I briefly had a discussion because they had expressed a concern about having to do the project assessment again. I'm pretty sure that they'll be able to put that together pretty handily, because it's, it's been done before, so that the planning board can move forward toward their findings. So that's my spiel. And I just want to say to Lou, congratulations. I really admire that you took on a brownfield redevelopment project.
Thank you. I just have to remember to wear Hawaiian shirts this time.
Only in August.
Any questions?
Or July. All right. Thanks, Liz. You owe it to Mark for any traffic, parking concerns that he has.
Sure. Yep. I'm Mark Patraro, senior project manager over at JMC. Just, we had provided a comment letter. I'll just go over some of the highlight items. We did provide some comments that are detail related to site plan. However, we would want to see garbage truck turning analysis plan, just knowing how it accesses the dumpster. Also, looking, we would probably want to see the pedestrian door locations for the buildings, so we know which way the accessible routes could be for the accessible parking spaces. Similarly, on a similar note, is the access for the accessible spaces to the commercial building. There's no real route that's shown on that right now. So we were looking for drop curb and ramp or sidewalk, some kind of route that shows that goes to the commercial building. That's mentioned in comment number five on my memo. And then lastly, is just if the applicant can give the town, the board, with more detailed specifics related to the improvements that are mentioned in the assessment at the intersection of Fairview Avenue and Cedar Street. Those are, some of the, those are really the main highlights of the review letter. Again, we did provide some more detailed comments asking for more site plan specs.
All right. Thanks, Mark. And Dom, anything from the engineering side at this point?
Yeah, we certainly have a lot of comments, since this is the first time around, but our comments focus on the three that we usually do, which are SWIP, water and sewer.
All right. Still a lot of details to work through. Let me just ask Lou quick. Basically, where you presented looked nice. You're planning like a carbon copy of the kitchen, your outdoor kitchen you have there in the city to move to the town, or that kind of, and similar building architecture? Is that, is that what you're, the way it looks?
Sorry, could you repeat that question?
Is the outdoor kitchen area the same as what you're doing in the city?
Similar, yeah, similar designs, yeah.
Because that looked...
You know, obviously molded to the space that it is incorporated, but we have some nice circular seating areas. Like I said, pergola, the nice architectural flourish, and kitchen facilities similar to what already exists.
Okay, because that, yeah, that city came out nice.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, the tenants, the residents here will be able to use the city. They can use the pool and all of that, but they have their own little private area, so they don't have to go there if they don't care to.
All right. Great. Let me go around the board for comments additionally. Start with Peter.
Just, I look forward to seeing the project assessment. I don't want to go into any questions at this point till we've had a chance to look at that. Obviously, there are questions. I'm gonna hold off on them. I'd also say, I just want to add, there are very few people around town, when you came to the town, the city, thought that you could pull this off, and you have. And I just want to congratulate you on, by all accounts, I mean, you're really doing a terrific job, so congratulations.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. I think the proof is in the pudding. We really have...
That's right.
100% occupancy, so obviously they like something there.
That's right. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yep. It's a nice project. Nicole?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's definitely a lot of questions still. You know, obviously, one that always jumps out at me is, you know, the handicap accessibility. And it looks like your other buildings that are in the city of Poughkeepsie are, but, you know, I just want to make sure that that is at the top of your list, because that's very important. Other than that, I just had a quick question about that one-story commercial building. Do you guys know what that's gonna be yet, or at this time?
No, we haven't tried even to market it. It's, we have no idea. I mean, it could obviously be office space, maybe an architect, lawyers, things like that. I mean, this is not like an area that you can use. 7-Eleven people aren't coming there, because it's not on a highway. This has to be a destination use. So I suspect it could be, you know, some kind of limited use like that, whether it be...
Just the way it's set up, it looks like it's set up for a restaurant. That's all. That's why I was...
Well, you know, it's got the, right, it's got the attractive setting, you know, it's nicely situated. But if we were, if that would be the interest, obviously, we would have to do all sorts of effort to make it a restaurant usable. But we don't really have an idea right now what it's there for, just that, you know, it will be commercial space within the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, if it winds up restaurant, then you're gonna need grease trap and things like that as well.
Correct.
All right. Rocco?
Nothing at this time, but just to ask, I noticed the patio on top of the commercial building, would that be accessed from the outside, I assume, via stairs?
I, you know what? I apologize. I believe so, yes. I, yes.
Yeah, that seems like a nice level of amenity as well.
It's just, you know, it's a nice little thing for the tenants to be able to go and look out at the river. That's seem, listen, that's what the big attraction is. Although, I must say, the residents are gonna have that opportunity to just go up to the top floor and do it there.
Well, I have to comment that I have been in one of your buildings, because I do have friends who do live there. And we had the opportunity to use one of the outside areas facing another river, and it was quite attractive.
Thank you. I, you know exactly what I mean when I say the community room, and then you go out.
Right, exactly.
Yes.
So hopefully, this works out as well, because that's a very nice job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Rocco. And Bob?
I don't have any questions about the project at this point, but I just had an observation. Maybe you can educate me on this. When I'm up on the walkway, and this goes back to when the first sets of buildings were put up on... were put up on, it's closest to the walkway, it seemed to me that it wouldn't take, you know, that big of a storm like another Hurricane Irene to have the river overflow the banks. You know, I don't know, how, how high is the ground floor of the buildings from, relative to the high tide of the river in normal times? Is that factored into the design, how you protect it from?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, it's a little deceptive because as I pointed out, that riprap in the rendering looks a lot steeper than it is. It's a gentle slope, but in fact, whereas the Greenway Trail is flood resistant, you know, the plants and all that, we're anticipating the potential for the river coming up, the roadway and the buildings are above the flood hazard zones.
Okay.
Eleven is the lowest, and then toward the back, it actually rises to either seventeen or twenty, you know, it goes up to, you know, when it hilts that Palisade against the back by the eastern end of the property. So it's well above the flood hazard. And in fact, we just got our FEMA, FEMA maps have been amended to eliminate us being in the flood zones. We're above that because of, initially because of all the fill we had for the brownfield.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, I was sure it had been addressed, but you know, when you're looking from up above, it's not clear what the offsets are, but thanks for the explanation.
Not a problem.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, you've still got quite a pile of dirt out there to work with.
I'll say.
Yeah, my two cents, excellent project you've been doing with the city, and it looks good. I anticipate the roof of the commercial building would be similar to going up on the roof of the clubhouse as far as overlooking the river.
Yeah, right, yeah, yes.
And...
Right, because the clubhouse has, yeah, an outdoor patio as well.
Yep.
Listen, the attraction, that situated is the river, so we've tried to give it much opportunity to enjoy it.
And I think, you know, the county mentioned, you know, looking into a particular bike rack style and possible some storage, I don't know if they could squeeze that in somewhere on the site plan. Take a look at their comments. The other question I had was the, you know, the dumpster location is kind of near the, you know, in front, near the river, and I'm not sure where the dumpsters are on the city side, but could there be an issue with, you know, just visual or odors, you know, people walking on the path there, or is there a way to...
That'll be screened with fencing, so no, it won't, it won't be a visual, it will not, you won't be able to see it.
Okay. And let me look at my other comments here. Just the traffic flows, to access to the, to the town portion of buildings, do you have to go through the, through the city road basically off of One Duchess Avenue?
So we have...
Or is there another access off water?
Another road that runs along, parallel with the Greenway Trail. That is one, that's one entrance. There is in fact a second entrance, and that's off of North Water Street, and that will flow, and that runs along the Eastley Boundary, and that you can get into the town that way as well.
And both of those are gated access, is that the way you're planning it?
Yes, correct.
All right. All right, thanks, Lou. Looking good, as we said, and I think we're ready for a resolution. Oh, and Liz, I see, I see Liz's hand raised.
It took us a long time to get to a positive view of us, but I guess it took building 150 apartments to get you to see that we are capable of building a nice product, and in fact, we had the financial wherewithal to do it. However, I do appreciate, we got some pretty thorough comments, as was noted before by Liz, and, you know, in the end, they're very helpful, and we're going to address them, and we're going to include, whether it be in a response letter from Dominic or in the project assessment, that will have a thorough analysis, and hopefully, it will respond to the questions raised in all those comments. And together with what you just said tonight, I hear what you're focusing on.
All right, thanks. Liz, I saw your hand raised, do you have another point?
Just a quick note to the planning board, that part of the board's responsibility among site plan review and aquatic resource permit is a determination of consistency with the Town of Akipsey Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, or LWRP, so that will be coming down the pike, and that will be something I'll be thinking about in terms of my recommendations about seeker. And, you know, just in terms of consistency, that building, the commercial building, if it can be as water-related as possible, that would be my recommendation. That's it.
Kayak rental, please.
I move that the planning board defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following, one through twelve.
Second. Moved and seconded, defer, called to question by roll call, vote, Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And myself, aye, motion passes five to zero. I don't know if you heard my last comment, Lou, I don't know if, you know, Liz said water-related, if some kind of commercial operation for, related to the activities on the river or something, kayak rental or whatever.
Right. You know, we are constantly looking at that Greenway Trail and trying to sort out how to better it. I, as I, as I said, I'm not sure how we're planning to use that commercial space, and of course, depend, it's quite dependent on the interest that someone might show in it, but I hear you.
Bike rental, there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of different things, activity things that could happen, I guess. But it's up to you to figure it out. All right, thanks, and good luck moving forward.
Just, just real quick, I just neglected to mention before that we did receive Duchess County planning comments. They are preliminary, they deem the application as incomplete, so they would like the town to recirculate or circulate the next submittal as part of the review effort, just, just as an FYI to the board, but also, these comments were sent to the applicant, so when you do your written response to comments, to all of the comments you receive from town staff, just please make sure that you include these as part of your written response to comments.
Yeah, we got those this afternoon, so...
Okay, great, thanks. Great.
Yeah, I think I mentioned a couple things from, that were on that review, so...
Yes, you did. One of them was the bicycle situation.
Yeah, they, I mean, they did a whole study on bikes and pedestrians last couple of years ago, and they have a preferred bike rack style and things like that, if you're adding them in.
Yeah, we've addressed bikes on the first section, so we will, I think you'll find that we're, we look into that.
All right. Thanks, Lou.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Next up, Jeff's probably hanging in there.
Hi, Liz.
Take care, Liz. Thanks, everyone, for wearing the Hawaiian. Eastdale Village Lot Line Revision between lots 10WA and 10WB. Jeff back there? Yeah, there you are.
Good evening again, if I can share my, share my screen. We have a fairly simple lot line revision that we're requesting.
So it's pretty straightforward.
Just to orient you where we are, this is the, the commercial core, you see, with forty-four on the right-hand side of the screen, Eastdale Avenue, here, Medical Office Building at the terminus. So there are two lots, lots 10WA and 10WB. The building area in lot 10W B is much bigger than 10WA for a, for a building parallel to Eastdale Avenue North. So we had a restaurant on 10WB, but they wanted to instead locate on 10WA, so we needed to just move the lot line to give them room for the restaurant to fit in there. So 0.14 acres of land is proposed to switch from 10WB onto the 10WA lot. So you can see the blue here was the old 10WA, and so really, that line just moves from there, captures the green area from 10WB and makes it part of 10WA. So that's the, that's the extent of the, of the lot line revision to accommodate a move of the user from the, from the yellow lot to the blue lot.
And that make, that makes WB much smaller, you have a, you have a tenant for that as well?
I'm sorry, say again?
So 10WB wound up being quite a bit smaller, so does there a tenant lined up for that as well?
Yes, the 10WB building will be small. I mean, it was proposed for 10WA, so this swap, put over to 10WB. So really, just swapping, swapping restaurant buildings here.
Okay, great. Thanks. Eric, any comments on this?
Yeah, briefly, just for the board to know, this is a type-two action that does not require environmental review under seeker. And I think there's the lot line, where the staff is recommending a conditional lot line revision approval with this. A lot line revision, it's a separate section of the town code, it has a different timeline than subdivision or site plans, of a sixty-day approval period to get it signed, but we're, off the bat, we're recommending the board, we've included in the resolution at the board's discretion, provide an additional sixty days. That will also allow for coordination with the site plan.
Sounds good.
Those are our comments, or there's a few technical comments in here. I would ask Jeff one, one quick question, just for the coordination with the site plan. I think there was an outdoor seating area associated with 10WA on the site plan, so is that going to switch as well?
Well, the outdoor seating stays where it is. It'll now be associated with, it'll, it'll still be on 10WA, it's just that, that a different restaurant will be adjacent to it.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thanks, Eric. I think we'll just go around the board for comments with this. Peter?
I'm good.
Nicole?
I'm good.
Rocco?
I'm fine.
Bob?
Nothing from me.
And I'm good with this too. Looks fairly minor. We'll go ahead with the motion.
Move that the planning board grant conditional lot line revision approval valid for sixty days, and also grant sixty-day time extension of said approval from October 19, 2020 forward to December 18, 2020, subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness exclusive of, not limited to the following, one through three D.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, grant conditional. Called to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And myself, aye, motion passes five to zero. All right, now you got some architecture. Jeff, number three.
Yes, I'm going to share my screen again, and I believe Giovanni is going to join us as well. There you are.
And I'm actually going to say goodnight, since the board doesn't need me for architectural review.
All right.
Thanks, thanks a lot, Lisa, for joining.
Bye.
All right, go ahead, Giovanni.
Hey, well, hang on, I'm just, I need to get the slide show up.
Okay, yep.
Bear with me just a second.
The next set of buildings.
Okay, so yes, I'm starting with buildings A3 through A6, and, and just, just a locator here where we're talking about, unlike the last drawing, forty-four is across the, across the bottom, and Eastdale Avenue is running up and down here, so buildings A3 through six are located right, right here. Let's try to find the, find the purple. So I'll turn it over to Giovanni now.
Good evening, glad to see everyone again. So we're, we're here to talk about A3 through A6, so this, this rendering here is in context of that side of the street, so the left side would be the previously approved Rossi's building, all the way ending at the B building, which will hold our offices on the second floor, so forty-four would be on the left side. So it's an important building that transitions between the two ends, and, you know, this just was, I thought was an important slide to put up so that you see it in the context of the entire block. Swing over to the next slide, Jeff. So zooming in, again, keeping in with the architectural vernacular that we've been using throughout Eastdale, we're trying to create a little bit more diversity here with roof lines, with material, so on the left side, you have a forward-facing gable, and then we have a building that has, you know, a gable, side gable with dormers, and then one, we're introducing a little brick on this building, again, to make this feel like it's being done by multiple different hands, different designers. Jeff, next slide. So that was the front elevation, this is the elevation in the rear. Again, you can see both buildings in context to the right and left that have been approved already. Jeff, next slide. Side elevation, the one on the left is what would be facing the Rossi's building, and then the one on the right would be facing that street, which I believe is that founder's way, Jeff?
Yes, exactly.
And it would be facing our, our corporate headquarters. Next slide, please.
Yep.
Again, the, the material that we're using is, is everything that we've been already using within Eastdale, some cementation siding, trying to stay within their color palette. Again, the trim being cementation siding, and then a, a full double hung window with SDLs. We're going to try to introduce some more colored windows. Also, if you've been up to see the completed cottages, you'll see that two of them are actually black, so we might introduce some other colors that, that will blend hopefully well with the siding. So this will be A3, this will be the first one closest to Rossi's. Next slide, Jeff. The next unit here, again, cementation siding, introducing a different color here, hot apple spice, the trim would be a darker, a darker red. Again, a lot of the inspiration is these New England colors that you would see throughout any historic Main Street throughout the Northeast, and then again, same, little black slash sash windows, double hung SDLs. Next, here, we're looking for some, you know, gray colors on the trim on the lower level, but we're introducing some trim, and we're actually doing, starting to do some projection, that's actually a bay, that projects off the facade about eight inches. Again, that same New England vernacular that you would see on any Main Street, and then a dormer on, on the roof side, just to give some, you know, texture and some movement to the height. Next slide, Jeff? And then going back to a simple federal-style vernacular, this would be in the taupe color with some green, green accents in trim, storefronts, and same hardy and same window sashes. Here, the, the window, we're proposing a little, something a little more in the, in the brown color, which is they call cedar. Okay, Jeff, next. So do you want to go to the next building, or do you want to stop, see if there are questions on this building?
Yeah, as long as we did that, that's a good idea, Jeff. Let's go around the board, anybody have any comments or questions? Peter?
My only comment is that it looks great, you know, you, you, you're encompassing everything, you know, that we would like to see, you know, the gables, dormers, brackets, you know, the, the windows, you know, that, that you've included here that allows so much light, not just in the commercial buildings, but in the residential space, it's great. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yep. Nicole?
I don't have anything, it looks great.
Rocco?
Yeah, I think they're doing a great job, and this is just another follow-through from there.
And Bob? And Bob?
Yeah, get over everything that was just said. I think it looks terrific.
Yeah, I think you're getting the consensus here from the board. You're doing a great job out there and it's good to see this type of project in our town.
Thank you.
So we can move on to building E5. This is the new building on the lot that, the wider lot that the board just voted to move the lot line on. As you can see, against location, the E5 building across the street from the buildings we just looked at.
So here, we're actually going with a little bit of a different flavor that's matching something that the actual owner of the building is, fell in love with. And I don't know if anyone's familiar with the village of Walden in Orange County. He saw this building, tried to replicate it as much as possible, even right down to the colors. But it has, it has a two story brick facade in the front off this Italianate architecture. But what's interesting here, the bays, they project, but they project as a 45. So they actually come to a point. I think you can see that in the rendering. And then a little bit of, almost like this little Dutch detail at the top of the roof line. Again, just to give it a little texture. And that's part of the reason why the building across the street, we tried to get a little bit more height so that these two buildings work with one another and they complement each other. So you have your entrance to the restaurant on the lower level centered on the bay. And then on the right side would be the entrance to the suites upstairs. Next slide, Jeff? Again, continuing this architecture, 360 degrees or really 270 degrees. The other side is actually, will be attached to another building. But trying to take that same architectural style and wrapping it around the building and continuing, you know, adding a little element like an old historic looking chimney in the rear, adding some awnings for additional color. Again, same awnings, same windows, large windows, SDLs, double hung. These suites will have a lot of light, a lot of light. Next slide, Jeff? This side here is the elevation that will actually face the, our cottage square, which is where the cottages are now, right now, an opening. So if you could imagine the restaurant actually visible to the green. And it was one of the reasons why this owner wanted to be on that side because now he sees how great the cottage greens coming out and he wants to be part of that excitement and part of that, you know, part of that whole thing that's happening there. He wants to be part, he wants to be in the middle of it all. And again, we're doing stuff with awnings, adding a little color and the brick is something different also.
All right.
Material, brick, the siding on the third floor, again, cementation, same product we've been using throughout the project. A darker color this time will be called race slate and the same sash cold tech windows this time in a crimson color, which we think will play well with the green.
So this building encompasses, this building encompasses both E and both 10 WA and 10 WB?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Does this encompass both 10 WA and B or is it?
No, this is only going to be on 10 WA. 10 WB will be this space right here. My rectangle may be a little larger than the lot line, but there will be another building between this building and the breezeway.
So you'll be coming back for that architecture?
Yes.
All right. Again, any comments from the planning board? Peter?
Looks great.
Nicole?
Thank you.
Anything? Oh, maybe he's still muted, Nicole.
Yeah, I couldn't unmute for a second there. No, it looks great. I love it.
And Rocco?
Yeah, that's a continuation of a great job.
Bob?
Yep, very nice. I like it.
Same here. You indicated this would be a restaurant as well. Is there any outdoor seating for this one or is that?
Yes, the outdoor seating as shown on the site plan would be right outside of this door on the end elevation.
Got it, okay. Great. All right, will we accept architecture of both the building, of all those buildings as presented?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Guys, good luck. It's good to see the cottages open now with those businesses in there.
They're doing very well. Okay, we're very excited there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking of architecture, got the next up Hudson Heritage Building L coming back in to take a look.
All right, hi, everyone. This is Mark Schultman with Design Development. Can you hear me?
How's it going, Mark? Yep, we can hear you. Great.
Okay. All right, wonderful, wonderful. Okay, so I'm going to share my screen. Okay. I now have up on the screen here the Windsor Gate Site Plan. And here in, we're here to review Building L. We'd submitted prior and there were numerous comments and we have resubmitted. And I will take you through that, through that presentation. So it's located here, basically in the center of Windsor Gate in front of the public, the largest of the public plazas there. This is the footprint, which remains unchanged. These are the black and white cat elevations with all of the materials identified. And with some of the comments that we had received on some of the other buildings, we've incorporated some of those notes in this package as well. HVAC and gas meters need to be screened. Rooftop equipment is going to be set back and will be screened and visible. And I'll take you to the renderings because I think that's really where you can see the changes the best. So here we have the, so we presented last time and I think, I think you were all correct in that we did not have as much detail or even enough historical sort of detail in this building, this particular building. But we've done a lot to modify that. One of the things we've done is we've incorporated significantly more brick into the building. And because, and at the center of this building, we have got sort of this tower element and we have this tiered parapet element. And these literally come from the south wing of the admin building. And on the back of the presentation, I have some images so you can see where we got our inspiration for those designs. But I think it's, and I'll just show you this other perspective from this angle. I think it's certainly an improvement and the detail is there. I think this is certainly a much richer facade than we had previously. I'll take it around the back. And again, there were a lot more stucco. Now we have significantly more, significantly more brick. I think it's richer. And I know that signage is still yet to be determined, but they're placeholders for the time being. And then this is the facade on the other side. Again, this is the backside of the building.
Interesting. Still showing a drive through there?
Yes, we're still showing the drive through there. And again, more than likely when there is a tenant, we'll be back. Certainly with modifications to whatever that tenant wants to do on this building. If, now I can, we can stop there and talk about the architecture of this building or I can go all the way through this and then we can open it up for comments, whatever you would like.
So you finished going through it, so we get an idea?
Okay. So this is the, so this is the refuse enclosure. There were quite a few comments related to that, again, on previous sets. This is double enclosure. These are steel gates. There is now a closing mechanism, which is incorporated into the hinges of the gate so that they will automatically close. The finishes and materials have been called out and we've developed essentially a lot more detail now so you can see what's happening here. And this is the, section really hasn't changed. This is a large plan. We've reduced the gap between the structural steel post that supports the gate and the enclosure itself. And again, we have an automatic gate closing mechanism in that hinge, which is identified here. Materials are called out. We're doing a Benjamin Moore black iron frame and a two by six weathered fire retardant wood slats by Drycon. So, and the wall, essentially that has remained unchanged and those materials and colors match the existing or the proposed buildings. And the last page, so this is where, you know, you'll start to see, again, on that, the south wing of the admin building is just absolutely beautiful building. And so we went back around looking for inspiration. Again, you'll see this stepped roof detail with the three openings. And there's even a little grate in there that we're incorporating into the facade. And likewise, we're incorporating that, this tower element, so to speak, with this decorative arch door at the base. So if I just go quickly back to the rendering, you can see how those elements on the south. There's your arch opening, your tower element and our two tiered, our three tiered parapet with the openings and the ironwork grates within those openings. So I think that is, that's most of the change that we've made on this building.
All right. Thank you. I did have a, let me go to Eric. Any comments first from the department?
The, it's a, the board has discretion for architectural review. Based on some previous discussions, we've provided some, we recommend some conditions. Numbers two through six, or five rather, are just, they're technicalities consistent with the previous conditions that the board has exercised in other buildings.
Yep.
Number one is it's more of an opinion. The board, the board was, it had some comments about it, so you should, they want to discuss that. There was also, there were also comments received today, which actually, I think they kind of dovetailed with comment number one about the roof design of that facade facing the plaza with regard to the end caps. The county also commented on the false gables and visibility, carried gables through to the opposite elevation. Those were sent out just a little, they just arrived a little while ago, a couple hours ago, and they were forwarded to the board. Someone mentioned that they were interested in the end caps and seeing what building E looked like. And I forwarded the conditionally approved building E to you for comparison. The board's free to discuss and take action.
All right. And did you also mention something about the retaining walls that we'll take a look at also?
Yeah, I guess I would suggest that the board deal first with building L. And then consider, the retaining walls, that was just, came up yesterday afternoon. So I would, the applicant submitted some materials, but I'll suggest you deal with that after building L.
Sounds good. I had a question first. The, Mark, there's like, kind of, right in the middle, there's kind of two gray utility doors that go to just a tiny space inside the building. What is that use?
That is in fact the utility room.
So it's not for garbage or anything like that or?
No, it's not, no. It's a, it's an electric meter room and a water room.
So that's okay. So the meters are going to be hidden in there?
Yes, they're, yes, they're incorporated inside, inside the utility room.
And you have no, still no tenants confirmed for these buildings?
That's correct.
Be interesting to see who gets the arch door.
Yes, exactly.
All right, let's go around the board for comments. Start with Bob this time.
I like, I mean, I like the look of it. I don't really have any questions.
All right, and Rocco?
The only comment I have, I think that they've improved it quite a bit here. On those two utility doors that you mentioned there, Carl, Mr. Schultman there, is there maybe something else you can do with that to make it look a little bit more attractive, but yet not make it look like an entrance to a shop? It kind of looks, looks out of place there.
Okay, I mean, I think, yeah, I think certainly, certainly there.
I mean, maybe you can go and find some other architectural element on site there and maybe incorporate that in there, but make it solid doors obviously, so they don't look inviting.
Yeah, let me, let me ask you a question. If we made that all brick, so there was continuation of brick, what do you, that might, that might do the trick.
That could. It's just, but where would you put those doors? Would it be on the other side? Wherever they are, if they look like that, they're not very attractive. That's my comment. I mean, yeah, having all brick there would be fine, but wherever you put those doors, I'd like to see them a little bit more attractive because I think they really take away from that side of the building.
Okay.
Does there need to be two doors?
Yes.
Yes, okay, just wondering, yeah.
Unfortunately, that, given the configuration at this point, both doors are needed and that location is central to that building.
You don't want it to look too inviting that somebody's going to try to go in there.
That's correct.
That's why I said, you know, you don't want to make them inviting. But it appears that everything else might be glass. So if that's something like wood or something like that, it would be obvious that it's not a store entrance.
Right.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Nicole? I'm hearing somebody.
Yeah, I mean, I, at first I wasn't sure that I really liked those openings in the middle with the iron, but they're growing on me. I do think that it kind of goes with the other updates that you made that kind of give a nod to the psych center. I would just want to reiterate something that the Duchess County Department of Planning said. They said that seems to be a lot of signage and ultimately a visible clutter of signage. But again, you're still looking for some tenants. So some of that stuff might just go away on its own. So that's really all I had to say.
Great, thanks.
If I can just make one comment, just one response to that and to that note from county. I think that, again, this being primarily a retail street, retailer, restaurant, the signage here and in particular, you know, the different awnings, some of the blade signs, all of that, you know, it's partly about the signage, but it's a lot about the ornamentation and decoration that you would typically see in retail. And you would see this on the Main Street. So I think some variety is good. And I think, you know, maybe, you know, maybe the circles get, again, restricted to logos and things like that. But again, I think, I think they're as important as architectural elements that, you know, embellish the facade as they are just signs.
Can we just ask Mark and/or Mike, are we any further along with trying to get a sign code for this area?
A little bit further along, but not far enough. So we will continue to work on that.
All right. And Peter, do you have any comments?
The only comment I have is, since this is a historic district, I'm glad to see that the applicant is making a real effort here to incorporate the architectural detail from the historic buildings. And I'd like to see it continue in that direction.
Thank you. And my two cents is I like this, what you've done here, Mark, better than your first draft of L. Since this is on the public square here, it's got some more character, as everyone has said. Since this is on the public square here, it's got some more character, as everyone has said. And just a reminder that, you know, what you have shown is, as art murals on the wall to complete some of the architectural detail is not meant to be signage, but intended to be art.
Correct.
If it in fact winds up being there. All right. I move we accept architect's presentation for Building L. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks for improving it. And let's move on now. Mark, you had, did you have anything to show for talking about the retaining wall?
Yeah, I can take you through, I can take you through this brief presentation on the retaining walls. So, so huge site plan. We'll zoom in on the areas that are, we've been referred to. Essentially, there are seven different retaining walls on the site. And I'll, I'll show you below details of where those walls are.
Sounds good.
But as an overview, some of these walls are intended to be utilized. We're proposing that a versalock, gray versalock block be used as the retaining wall for some of these. And in some cases, we're proposing stone. So essentially, everywhere you see green, so we have three, three retaining walls here at the north entrance.
Let me just stop you here a second, Mark. Can you, if you can, if you know, anyway, mention some of the heights of them as you go through them?
I don't have that information.
Okay.
I apologize.
All right, I was just curious how, how big some of these are.
Right, yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't have that information. I'm not sure if there's anybody on that has that information. But I can take you through essentially the proposed finish for, for those and where they're located right now.
It's Susan Burke from Staver. I believe that the height will be part of engineering. This is not engineering, this is just architectural. So
Right.
The engineering, I believe, will drive the height and those other details.
All right, I mean, it has a different look if it's three feet high versus 20 feet high, you know? So that's all, that's what I was just trying to get at.
This is just, this is just material tonight, that's what Eric wanted.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, so on these three locations, on the green retaining walls here, it's a gray versalock block, which will allow us to contour and a step back as you move. Other images of some other blocks and different projects, so you can get, you know, a different idea depending on the height of that. And again, I don't have that information. But that is the versalock block that's being proposed. This is for walls one, two, three, and seven. And on the yellow highlighted areas, which is essentially here along Route nine, around the director's residence, I'm just going to skip this for a second. And up here, behind the residential building, we're proposing an Albany Road local stone. This mockup has been built on site to have some idea what that looks like. So that's, that's being proposed for those other three retaining walls. So I don't want to speak out of turn here, but my gut is the smaller walls are stone and the bigger walls are versalock, which would make sense to me.
That makes sense.
And that's, that's, that's it.
I think, yeah, our package, or the note I had seen said your, another material you were previously looking at was, what was it? Lock and load, I think?
I think what, I think what was called out on the original drawings were very large block masonry units, if I'm not mistaken. And the thought was, the scale of, they were out of scale with the site and, and stone. They were enormous blocks. And that this would be better with something that was smaller, smaller units. I think more in keeping in scale with the project.
Yep, that sounds good. I agree, they look better. I've seen those other blocks and other retaining walls, and that's a massive thing. All right, let's go around the board again for any comments on that. Peter?
One of the more distinctive features of the psych center is its stone walls. And I, I don't, the versalock, to me, does not seem consistent with, with that type of structure. I mean, the Albany Road local stone seems much more appropriate. I don't know if there's a structural reason for the versalock, or whether it's just cosmetic. But certainly, the Albany Road local stone would be much more in line with the, with historic perspective of the stone walls that, that lined the roads, all the roads almost, and bridges in the psych center. That would be my comment.
We have the stone walls up, you know, along in front of Merritt as well, in front of the, in front of the Hudson, the plaza there, in front of Home Depot. Nicole?
I think they look good.
Rocco?
I mean, I think it looks fine, but I tend to, to like the stone wall aspect of it better, because it does really match not only that area, but as you go along even into, into the neighborhood in the town of Hyde Park, you see a lot of stone walls and you see that type of stone work, even in front of the plaza there to the south of this. So if that would be architecturally possible, that'd be my choice.
And Bob?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it looks good, but I think Peter's comment has some, some value and probably be a good idea to look at, I'm sure he will accommodate that.
So I guess, yeah, I guess we're trying to figure that out. That's why I was asking about the heights, because I, I get the impression you said the lower, any lower retaining walls would be using the more, you know, rock face kind of thing. And the versalock would be used for some higher ones. Could you, Mark, try to point out again where you think the versalock would be used?
Yeah, so the versalock is where the, the green retaining walls are. So that's, that's here on the site, here at the north entrance and around the building here. Up along, there's a retaining wall up here in front of the admin building. And then the stone, the stone is proposed to be utilized up here around this residential building here and along Route nine. And there's a small retaining wall right here in front of the director's residence.
So having that, would that, would that wall go along the entire Route nine frontage?
No, so it's, it's limited. Let me, let me get to the next. So the versalock is limited to these locations here only, just what's highlighted here, right around there. So the rest of Route nine does not have versalock. In fact, might go to the larger. So from here to here, there is no retaining wall. And then right along here, basically in the middle of the site along Route nine, is stone. It's the proposed stone. And, and that's it. So the other versalock wall is up here in the great lawn area.
I guess, Peter was that, asking why isn't that stone retaining wall in front, on Route nine, you know, extended further? It's just in that one spot? Is that just a topography issue there, or?
I, I can't answer that question. I apologize.
You just, yeah, from your standpoint, you're looking at it, it's surreal.
It's Susan Burke. The, the walls were designed so that the prettier walls, the stone walls, you can see from Route nine, the versalock walls are more of a structural, structurally designed wall. And they're, they were placed purposely for the, the engineering ability of these walls for the way they're put together. It's not the same, they don't, they don't serve the same purpose mechanically, engineering.
Yeah, that was my question.
That, that's the purpose of, I don't know if it has to do with the height, but it's the, the, the function of the wall. And, and the walls are placed where they need to be.
Right, right, based on.
It's an engineering thing.
You know, that makes sense, I'm, I'm fine with that.
The one, but can I ask one question? The, the retaining wall that's up by the admin building, you know, so that it's basically along the great lawn and in front of the admin building. That's the only one that really, when I look at the selection of which ones are stone versus the other, the other type, seems that's a shame that that one couldn't be more, you know, have the stone finish as well, just given the tremendous importance of the great lawn and the admin building. So I, I don't know if there's a way to, to kind of go back and find out if there's a, you know, there would be,
Yeah.
if that particular retaining wall could be done differently.
Or, or after.
Yeah, is there some reason, is there a structural reason why you couldn't use the stone?
Or if you have a structural versalock, could you?
I believe it's part of the retention ability of the wall.
But once you had the versalock up there.
The stone, the stone, concrete and stone don't perform the same function as the engineered wall.
Right, right. But maybe a possibility of, you know, clad, you know, once the engineered walls.
We went from that giant, giant ugly block to this more refined, small block. It's a much prettier block. And it doesn't look so commercial, it doesn't look like the side of a highway.
I mean, it isn't.
That's why we moved from, from, from the, you know, that giant lock, it just looks like mafia block, to a more refined stone. So it, it just looks prettier, it looks more like hubblestone almost.
Yeah, no, I think that's, you know, I think that's nice and very much appropriate, especially along the, the entrance, you know, off of Route nine there, which I'm pretty sure those are pretty big walls, if I remember correctly from the site plan. But, but again, yeah, the one by the admin building is the only one that I would, I would just wonder if there was another solution that would.
Well, what if you put, if you, if you constructed the retaining wall and clad it with manufactured stone, a simulated stone?
We can certainly look at that option for that wall.
Yeah, I mean, it's a fairly inexpensive option that would be much more attractive than the versalock.
Right.
Especially in that location. That's the only historic building that's being retained.
But if the versalock is, you know, needed for the, for the stabilization, and then any kind of cladding could be put on top of it, potentially.
Yes.
Is that?
This is Rocco, I've got another question. That stone wall on the faces of Route nine there, is that, is that for, is, is there a dip there in the road or something? Because it seems, I can't tell from, from the topography there. Right, that one there, that, that yellow section there, is, is that because there's a dip there and you have to retain, or, I mean, it goes up, so the building in the back won't be level? Because I'm thinking that maybe you can extend that a little bit and it'll look pretty nice along Route nine. If that's not a structural thing. I mean, is it structural or is it cosmetic?
It is, I believe, structural. And I believe if you continued it, it, you would run into the earth. It wouldn't, it wouldn't come.
So there's a dip there, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's a structural, it's necessary structurally and it's placed where it needs to be put.
Okay. Because I'm thinking maybe if you extend that a little bit, you could, that would be very attractive.
But depending on the.
I don't know, I don't know, you're going to, I don't know that you're going to run into easements and things, things that are in the way there.
Yeah, I mean, I think actually that that's really more of a site plan kind of a issue. You know, and I, I do think there was structural reasons for the placement of these walls. So I'm not sure that we want to, you know, I don't think it necessarily makes sense to, to, to have them redo that aspect of it.
I retract my comment.
All right, thanks, Rocco. But I, I, you know, I think, as I said before, that, the one wall up by the great lawn in the admin building, that's the one I, I would, you know, focus on.
But as, but as I said, you're trying to order the versalock there or something. They can at least still put that up and perhaps clad it. Can I ask what the dimension is, the versalock? Is that, that like a standard concrete block dimension versus those huge things?
Yeah, I, I think they are. I, I think they're.
So it's, you know, not as small as camber pavers or something?
Standard CMU unit, that's my understanding.
So not as small as unilock or something, but that, so it's kind of in between, yeah?
Correct. I, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to say, and I, and don't hold me to this, but, you know, I don't think they're, you know, I think they may be 16 inches by eight inches. They might be slightly bigger than that, but they're not much bigger than that.
Yep, sounds good, Mark. All right. Any other comments from the board? I move we accept the versalock for retaining walls with the condition that we examine cladding the, that small retaining wall up at the top on the great lawn with similar rock as the lower walls.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes five to zero.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Mark.
This is Eric. The, the, the map that you got, that motion is fine. But it was a motion to accept the versalock retaining walls, which accounts for four out of the seven.
Oops, sorry.
So there's another three walls which were, are proposed to be clad in stone.
And I also moved.
Fine, right? Everyone was fine with those.
Yes.
Yep, I also, I also moved that we.
If you intended to accept those others.
I do.
You might want to just, you know, amend the resolution to include those others as proposed to be clad in stone.
Yep. I amend my resolution to include this, the lower stone walls clad with that, that gray river.
Albany Road local stone.
Local stone. Do I have a second for that amendment?
Second.
Moved and seconded to include the other stone walls with local stone. Called the question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thanks for clarifying that, Eric. Motion passes five to zero. All right, thanks, Mark.
All right, thank you very much, have a good night.
You too. Looks like the, looks like the shop rates coming along pretty well up there.
Yeah, it's getting there.
Hey, one additional item we have is the Verizon Store Additional Retail Expansion for a time extension. So I moved that the planning board grant one 90-day time extension of conditional site plan approval from July 21st, 2020 forward to October 19th, 2020, noting that no further time extensions are available.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes five to zero. Is there any other business before the board tonight? Anyone wants to bring up? Any other motions anyone wants to make, or should we just stay here?
A motion that we terminate the meeting.
Anybody second that?
Okay.
Moved and seconded to terminate the meeting. Called the question all as by roll call. Peter?
Aloha.
Nicole?
Aye.
Aye.
Pete, Bob?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
Myself, aloha.
This is a record for 2020.
Motion passes five to zero, three ayes and two alohars.
I thought we were going to get you out of here at seven, what happened?